All right, this meeting is called into session. Can we hear the roll?
Danielle Bathing.
Here.
Greg Strike.
Here.
Andre Spinelli.
Here.
Seth Anderson.
Here.
Brian Looney.
Here.
Jared Gardner.
Here.
Erin O'Quinn.
Here.
Radhika Krishna. Here. Jim Winchester.
Here.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next agenda item, is there a motion to approve the minutes? Moved by Commissioner Looney, seconded by Commissioner Gardner. Any objection? Seem no objection, the minutes are approved. Moving on to disclosures. Oh, also, I would just like to welcome our newest Planning and Zoning Commissioner, Mr. Winchester. Did I get that right?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Yeah, we are excited. I think we finally have a full board for the first time since two years ago. So it'll be nice to finally conduct full business, so we're glad to have you.
Thanks.
Moving on to disclosures, would you like to disclose that you are new Commissioner and you were not present at the earlier meetings?
Yes, so I abstain from voting on the minutes and I will abstain from voting on the consent agenda as I was not yet seated.
All right, thank you, Commissioner O'Quinn.
Nothing.
Commissioner Gardner?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Strike?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes, I'd like to disclose that I was absent for the case number 2019-0121. And I'm also, I have a conflict of interest for the two public hearings today, as well -- can I see your chair? As well as case of 5A, I guess for the Dowling intersection.
So you will be recused from those sections. Commissioner Spinelli?
Nothing.
Commissioner Krishna?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Anderson?
None.
And I also have no disclosures.
And I do have one.
Oh, Commissioner Strike.
I'm sorry, I'd like to identify on the consent agenda, item 1C, Resolution 2019-022. I was not present, so I would be abstaining.
All right, thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Commissioner Strike, seconded by Commissioner Anderson. Oh, is there any motion to pull items? We don't have to pull items, can't we just vote? Okay, does anyone want to pull an item for discussion? Nope. All right, move for a vote. And that item passes. Moving on to our regular agenda, case 2019-0 -- oh, and thank you, Commissioner Looney, you are dismissed for the rest of the day.
All right.
Moving on to our regular agenda, case 2019-0114, can we have the report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The Alaska Department of Transportation and Public Facilities is requesting a review of the design study report for the Dowling Road Seward Highway Upgrades Project in accordance with the procedures of Anchorage Municipal Code Title 21, Chapter 3, Subsection 190, Street and Trail Review. Project team is seeking Planning and Zoning Commission approval for proposed upgrades to the Seward Highway and Dowling Road interchange to widen it to full cross-section as well as the existing on-off ramps, roundabouts, pedestrian facilities, and lighting. There's specific focus on improving vehicular flow through this section, which is currently undersized for the daily observed traffic volumes. Concept report for this project was provided and discussed at the April 1st, 2019 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Project study area is a high-volume, high-to-mid-speed corridor with bidirectional streets with pedestrian and vehicular facilities located along Dowling Road, as well as the Brayton and Homer Drive, which are the frontage roads. The official Streets and Highways Plan, the OSNHP, classifies these roadways. Seward Highway is a freeway and Dowling Road is a Class III major arterial. And average daily vehicle trips, volumes for the motor vehicles as stated in the DSR are shown in the staff report on page three. Nearby stretches of Dowling Road have been designed to accommodate bus stops, however, there is currently no fixed route public transportation service within or near the project area. The existing land use is a mix of commercial, residential, and community uses. The range of existing uses includes Polaris K-12 school, as well as several commercial facilities. Residential lands within the project area are largely undeveloped, with only a few dwellings existing. Project area is located within an I-1 light industrial district, however, a small area of R-3 mixed residential comprises the northeast corner of the project area, and PLI, which is Public Lands and Institutions, comprises the southeast corner. 2040 Land Use Plan classifies the project area as light industrial commercial and also contains areas designated as compact mixed residential medium and community facility or institution. After analyzing the design alternatives and consulting with ADOT and PF, MOA staff, and the public through a combination of public meetings and online surveys, two alternatives were finalized, a compressed diamond interchange and a tight diamond interchange. Figures of these two designs are shown in the DSR. Both alternatives were deemed viable options which could accommodate the predicted traffic demand of design year 2040. Ultimately, the compressed diamond interchange was selected as the preferred design option because it requires less long-term maintenance than the signaled tight diamond interchange option. It provides a predictable interchange pattern along the Seward Highway corridor and is less costly to construct and maintain. The compressed diamond interchange will include the following improvements. Be replacing the Seward Highway-Dowling Road bridge to achieve a consistent cross-section width and design, reconstructing the existing Dowling Road roundabouts, ramps, and frontage roads, improving pedestrian and bicycle ways, upgrading curb ramps to comply with ADA standards, replacing and/or improving signage, striping, and lighting, improving drainage, clearing vegetation, relocating utilities as needed, and the acquisition of additional right-of-way. These improvements will assist in improving the corridor lighting, driver sight distance, as well as pedestrian amenities. A rectangular rapid flashing beacon is also proposed to aid pedestrians traveling through the roundabouts in an effort to improve driver awareness of pedestrians at this intersection. The preferred alternatives provide vehicular flow by increasing capacity, improving pedestrian facilities, enhancing existing lighting, and greater overall street conditions. This supports the permitted uses of the zoning districts along the project corridor and will enhance the future function of future uses. The preferred alternative advanced numerous policies of both the 2020 Comprehensive Plan and the 2040 Land Use Plan. Specific policies of the Anchorage 2040 Comp Plan that are supported by this project would be Policy 37, Policy 38, Policy 73, Policy 76, and Policy 81. And the following policies of the Anchorage 2040 Land Use Plan are supported by this project would be Policy 3.1, 5.1, 6.1, 8.2, and 8.3. In addition, the Anchorage Pedestrian Plan identifies the need for pedestrian crossing improvements in the area of the Dowling Road roundabouts as priority project number 167. The preferred alternative incorporates this priority. Rectangular rapid flashing beacons are proposed at the pedestrian crossing to improve driver awareness of pedestrians. And there were no objections to the design study reports received from reviewing agencies. There was just one advisory comment from AWU, which included a request to just be involved if any changes in the design or construction that pertain to their services. And with that, staff just has one condition of approval shown on the bottom of page six. That concludes my staff report, so thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, and I just wanted to state that even though this is not a public hearing, that all actions the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, an individual may have appeal rights relating to any of those actions, except for the Commission's recommendations to the Assembly which are not appealable. Appeals must be filed with the Clerk's Office within 20 days after approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution, which is the Commission's final decision. A fee for the appeal is required at the time of filing. Moving on, are there any questions for staff?
Are we going to hear from a petitioner or anybody? Or is that it?
Staff, are we going to be hearing from a petitioner or is your report the entirety of it today?
Through the chair, the petitioner is welcome to maybe give a statement if they'd like. That's up to the Commission.
So I do have a question then of staff, and that is in regards to the pedestrian improvements with the lighting, the flashing lighting on the roundabout. That's been an ongoing topic now since shortly after the first roundabouts were first placed because of the visibility to pedestrian traffic. So that's not a unique situation to these roundabouts, but actually composite against all the -- most of the roundabouts here that we've now established. Is this a new -- I noticed it comes under the preferred alternatives. I'm just looking to see if this is a preferred new alternative, or is this now going to be a required alternative henceforth on these roundabouts?
Through the chair, that's a great question. I think actually the petitioner would probably be the better person to answer that for you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Kevin Jackson. I am a project manager with the State of Alaska DOT.
Can you actually find a way to get the microphone down closer? Thank you, and state your name for the record.
My name is Kevin Jackson. I'm the project manager for the State of Alaska for this project. And in answer to your question, this is going to be done as an experimental feature. Those -- the rectangular rapid flash beacons are not currently recognized by FHWA, except as an experimental feature. But given the lack of compliance with drivers, two pedestrians at this roundabout, we're proposing to install them for crossing Dowling Road only. Because that's the hardest one. The other crossings are single lanes, and we're hoping that, you know, that compliance will be better. It's much shorter crossing and much safer.
I know that on the Diamond Sand Lake, I believe, there's one, and it seems to even have more pedestrian and/or bicycle traffic, and that's been a problem. Just a point. And then over there on Clatt Road has been another area of concern, especially in the summertime with bicyclists, because you start making that turn and they're out of your vision. And all of a sudden, you're in the crosswalk and you're upon them.
Yeah, we're going to be -- we're making geometric improvements as well to the roundabouts. I'm sure, as you all know, this was the first major roundabout that was put in, and we were constrained by -- we had right-of-way constraints and this overhead transmission line there as well. And so we were constrained on how large we could make the diameters of the roundabouts, and that allows people to drive faster than they should. And this design is, since we've acquired right-of-way since the original roundabouts were built, we've got the room to enlarge those to the more desired configuration that will force people to slow down, and it also improves visibility, sight distance. So it should be a dramatic improvement over the existing conditions for pedestrians and everyone, actually.
Thank you.
Any other questioners for the petitioner while he is up here? Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you. I'm actually not sure if the petitioner is best suited to answer this question if you're staff, but I was just curious, in the report, there's a reference on -- sorry, not the staff report, but the, I guess, the application, there's a reference to the preferred alternative forecast operate at a level of Service C. And I'm just, I'm not familiar with those levels of service, and I was wondering if someone could explain what level of Service C is and what the alternatives are.
That's basically a measure of delay that you would experience there. And right now, it's at the PM peak, the existing roundabouts are operating at near F. You know, so it has performed very well through the time, but it's, we're at a point now where there's so much more traffic on it that we need to make improvements to deal with that. But level of Service C is pretty good. It basically, you know, it's, you're not waiting very long. But F, D, and F are when you're starting to, you know, have to wait, and people start getting irritated and making bad decisions.
Okay. And how does the forecasted level of service play into the design process? Or is there like a threshold that you're aiming for? How does that?
Well, we, you take, you estimate the growth rate of traffic, and then, you know, the design life of it, and basically what we're striving for is, you know, a 20-year design life that would still have good level of service, if that makes sense.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Anderson?
I have two questions. First one, similar to Commissioner Gardner's, was the design life. I think, if I remember, it was the original roundabouts there installed like 15 years ago.
That's about right, I think.
And they were designed for 2020 loads.
They were, I think we've, the design life was, I think, about now, and we were over the projected volumes, I think, two years ago. So there, we've gotten everything we can get out of those. They're still functioning pretty well, except for in the PM peak.
Right. So I guess the question that I had was, looking at 2040 as a design goal, is that like every 15 years to redo this intersection seems a little bit often?
I don't think we'll have to redo this intersection again, to be honest with you. We're not expecting traffic to grow to the extent that it will need any additional modifications. However, if that happens, we do have enough room under the new bridge to install a third lane that might be necessary in, you know, in 20 years. And so we won't have to reconstruct the bridge, but we will have to reconstruct the roundabouts themselves because, right, it would require additional right-of-way acquisition in the southwest quadrant.
But not anticipated in 20 years again?
No, it's pretty unlikely.
Second question was about landscaping. And in the landscaping section of the application, it said none will be provided to mitigate moose conflicts or moose hiding out. And I was just wondering how that works with Title 21 when there's required buffer landscaping between highways and other uses? Specifically, when the project is taking right-of-way, if there's enough right-of-way being taken to provide the required landscaping between the uses, or if that's the individual property owner's responsibility?
Through the chair, that would apply to all new development projects that would be within that area on those parcels. However, if right-of-way is acquired by the state or municipality and thus some type of nonconformity is a result of that, that property enjoys those nonconforming rights. So if they were not able to provide the amount of landscaping required as a result of this acquisition, we wouldn't then force them to provide that landscaping, they would have nonconforming rights for it.
And the state doing a development project doesn't have to provide landscaping to meet Title 21, like the state doing a road project?
Through the chair, that falls on the adjacent property owners when they develop those properties to provide that landscaping.
And I had a question, and I'm not sure if it should be directed at staff or the petitioner, but I think I'll start with staff. Was this application, did it go in front of representatives from Vision Zero, and did they weigh in on what this, on the preferred alternative and what they thought about for pedestrian safety?
Through the chair, I'm not sure if, I'm sure a Vision Zero representative was made aware of the application, but I, there really isn't a Vision Zero agency that I can solicit comments from. So I can't really speak any further than that. The petitioner might know if there's been direct interactions with the Vision Zero team or not.
No, there haven't, not directly with Vision Zero, but, you know, we strive for that in all of our designs to minimize safety. We have presented at the B-PAC, and I think Bike Anchorage was very, you know, enthusiastic about the rapid flashing, you know, beacons that we're proposing to install, and the fact that the geometric improvements will just make it, you know, safer overall for everybody.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for staff or the petitioner? Commissioner Gardner?
Sorry, one quick final question. With respect to the beacons, there's a reference in the design study report to possible radar detection and PTZ or MIOvision cameras. What are the MIOvision cameras? What is that technology?
I am not an expert in that, but the radar detection can help detect pedestrians, and I don't know, we haven't flushed all those details out yet as far, I don't know that we're going to put cameras there that can pan, tilt, and zoom and stuff, but the, I don't know if you're familiar with these type of flashing beacons, but they're activated. They're, you know, pedestrians have to go up and hit them, and then they, they'll time out after a certain pre-programmed amount of time. I guess that doesn't really answer your question.
Yeah, I just, I wasn't familiar with that. It sounds like you maybe don't have a...
No, I'm no expert on these yet, but we're hoping to become that.
Okay.
Our consultant is going to start working on it soon.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for staff or the petitioner? All right, what is the will of the body? And whoever is moving, you may want to consider the department recommendations on page six as well. Commissioner Strike?
And a question to clarify, our action here this evening is to review and pass forward with any additional comments that we might have or with general consensus, is that correct?
Through the chair, that's correct.
Just on the staff recommendations on page six, I see department recommendations basically says recommends approval, but I don't see any conditions. Was there...
Through the chair, yeah, that's correct. The only condition is really to do what you say you're going to do kind of thing.
Commissioner Strike?
So I believe the motion is available here that in the case 2019-0114, I would move that we proceed and move this forward for Assembly consideration.
All right, is there...
With the adoption of the staff recommendations.
Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Krishna. Would anyone like to speak to the motion?
I'd like to make one comment, and that is, it is highlighted in the section itself in that there were no objections to the DSR when received by the reviewing agencies. And I think they have the most vested interest as well in the impacts surrounding the land, land use, and the right-of-ways. So, thank you.
I would also just like to add for the record that while it would be nice if there was in the future something set up where we could get a representative from Vision Zero to look at some of these suggestions, that I was glad to see that representatives from Bike Anchorage were able to weigh in on those comments, and that they looked at this position favorably, and it will, I hope that the new lights, this can kind of be a test run to see how that works, and it seems as though there is good research that it will, and it'll be nice to see that in effect. Commissioner Gardner, do you have additional comments?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to note as well with respect to the agency comments, that it looks like the Traffic Department for the municipality affirmatively supported the proposed alternative. I just wanted to have that on the record.
All right, and call for a vote. Before moving on to the public hearings, I believe that we need two motions. The first one is to combine public hearing item one and two. Is there a motion moved by Commissioner Strike, seconded by Commissioner Gardner? Commissioner Strike, would you like to actually provide that motion more eloquently?
In the matter of case 2019-0126, and the variance identified as G2 for case S12517, I think we'd make this one a motion to combine and act on it.
All right. Moved by Commissioner Strike, seconded by Commissioner Gardner. Any objection? All right, those items will be held together. And then we will also need a motion to postpone item three. Commissioner Strike?
So moved in the case of 2019-0126.
Seconded by Commissioner O'Quinn. Any objection? And that motion also passes. We will now be moving on to our public hearing. The procedure by which the public may speak to the Commission at its meeting is as follows. After the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the Chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the Commission rules of procedure. Because we're combining two items, all the times will be doubled, so I'll explain that as we go through. Petitioners, including all of their representatives, receive 10 minutes. However, since they are, we are combining two items here, they will receive 20 minutes. Part of their time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representative groups such as community councils, PTAs, et cetera, receive five minutes, so for this, they will be allocated 10 minutes. Individuals will receive three minutes, or because we are combining two, they will receive six minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the Commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the Commission. As I said before, any individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except for Commission recommendations to the Assembly which are not appealable. Appeals must be filed with the Clerk's Office within 20 days after approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution, which is the Commission's final decision. A fee for appeal is required at the time of filing. Before I move to the staff report, I just want to acknowledge that we have some high school students here, and I would like to ask them to come up and state their name for the record, just so their teacher knows that they actually stayed. Yeah, if you could just state your name and what school you're here from.
Lee Forbes Eagle River High School.
All right, thank you.
Riley Price Eagle River High School.
Laura Rippe Eagle River High School.
Mary Goodwin Eagle River High School.
I'm Jane Neele Eagle River High School.
Jacqueline Demir's Eagle River High School.
All right, and I just want to let all you know that that does not count against your time, that will be reserved later if you choose to testify during these items.
And I'd like to make a comment. In all the years of doing this, Eagle River High School has consistently had students show up during one of these meetings, of all the high schools. It's been Eagle River High School that's been consistent. Thank you.
All right, well, welcome again. And staff, can we hear the report?
The Municipality of Anchorage Project Management and Engineering Department is requesting Planning and Zoning Commission approval of the design study report, DSR, for the East 48th and Cordova Street reconstruction project in accordance with Chapter 21-03190, Street and Trail Review. This project proposes to reconstruct East 48th Avenue between Old Seward and Cordova, and Cordova Street between International Airport Road and East 48th Avenue, due to the general deterioration of both streets within the study area, in addition to the lack of drainage facilities, lighting, and pedestrian accommodations. East 48th Avenue was extended from Cordova Street to C Street in 2015, so this reconstruction project would also provide a continuous improved corridor for both vehicle and non-motorized traffic between Old Seward Highway and C Street. There are few streets that provide connectivity through arterial blocks in the area, which makes improving such connections especially important. So there is a variance as part of this request. The preferred alternative for East 48th Avenue conflicts with Title 21 because a sidewalk is proposed on only one side of East 48th Avenue instead of on both sides, as would otherwise be required. In order for the preferred alternative in a DSR to be approved as written, the requested variance must also be approved. As a decision-making body for the associated DSR, the Planning and Zoning Commission may also serve as a decision-making body for the variance. And looking at the variance standards for, again, sidewalk facilities on only one side of the street on East 48th. Standard A, there are special circumstances or conditions affecting the property such that the strict application of the provisions of the regulations would clearly be impractical, unreasonable, or undesirable to the general public. This standard is met. Several existing commercial... Several existing commercial, light industrial uses on the south side of East 48th Avenue are legally non-conforming for lack of onsite turning and maneuvering, lack of landscaping, and lack of onsite pedestrian facilities. In addition, several of these uses have full frontage driveway access. These legal nonconformities, particularly between Eagle Street and Fairbanks Street, result in a situation where continuous vehicle access on the south side of the avenue would conflict with pedestrian traffic. However, it would not be impractical, unreasonable, or undesirable to provide a sidewalk on the south side of East 48th Avenue between Cordova Street and Eagle Street. The south side of this particular block consists of a single approximately 6.4 acre lot that could see a significant commercial and/or residential development in the future. Recommended condition of approval with us in mind is to provide a sidewalk on the south side of East 48th Avenue from Cordova Street to Eagle Street, in addition to the proposed pathway on the north side of the street. Standard B, the granting of specific variance will not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other property in the area in which such property is situated. The standard is met. The corridor's existing residential uses are located exclusively on the north side of East 48th Avenue, which is where the 10-foot pathway is proposed to be installed. This pathway would provide pedestrian mobility where is needed while avoiding the high concentration of conflict points with turning and maneuvering vehicular traffic on the south side of the street. Standard C, such variance will not have the effect of nullifying the intent and purpose of the subdivision regulations or the comprehensive plan of the municipality. The standard is met. The proposed pathway on the north side of East 48th Avenue conforms to the comprehensive plan and governing title 21 regulations by providing a safe, convenient, non-motorized facility that meets existing design standards. And finally, standard D, undue hardship would result from the strict compliance with specific provisions or requirements. The applicant may supplement the forms supporting documents. The standard is met. Requiring sidewalks on both sides of the entirety of East 48th Avenue would result in a pedestrian facility that traverses multiple curb cuts and uses with full frontage driveway access. Legally nonconforming status that some of these lots have also means that pedestrians would constantly contend with vehicles backing up, turning, and otherwise maneuvering across the sidewalk. Therefore, strict compliance would result in undue hardship. And now turning to the design study report itself, which considers itself for the entire project corridor on both Cordova and East 48th. The DSR for this project contains detailed information on the commission review items required in chapter 21-03-190. Several of these items are discussed in detail in the staff report as follows. First, the existing traffic conditions overview. Within the study area, Cordova Street is classified in the official streets and highways plan as a Class 1 collector. Well, East 48th Avenue is classified as a Class 1C neighborhood collector. As shown in figure seven, volumes are projected to remain at less than 1,500 average vehicles per day. As the DSR notes, however, the partially industrial context of the study area means that a relatively high proportion of that traffic will consist of heavy vehicles. Recent numbers show that of the 2020 volumes cited in figure seven, approximately 3.7 of those percent of those volumes consist of truck traffic on East 48th Avenue and about 2.8% on Cordova Street. This is higher than average for the municipality in general. To better accommodate the truck traffic and commercial industrial land uses, both existing and future, the preferred alternative proposes 12-foot vehicle lanes on East 48th Avenue. And as a higher classification, Class 1 collector, Cordova Street's proposed to provide 11-foot lanes. Considering land use, as documented in the DSR, the existing land use is a mix of residential, institutional, and commercial industrial uses that coexist in very close proximity. And for existing zoning, as shown in the existing zoning map in figure eight, the project corridor traverses the following zoning districts. B3, general business; I1, light industrial; R3, mixed residential; and RO, residential office. The zoning map in figure eight also shows how tightly mixed the zoning districts are. In selecting the preferred design alternatives, the project team has taken interactions between these differing land uses into account, in addition to accommodating some of the nonconforming uses on the south side of East 48th Avenue. And for future land use, the 2040 land use plan designations of compact mixed residential, medium, commercial corridor, light industrial, commercial, and community facility or institution are all present along the project corridors. Land use designations in the study area largely reflect the existing zoning, indicating that what is allowed by current zoning is intended to continue into the foreseeable future. And looking beyond the immediate study area, the East 48th Avenue corridor is anchored at both ends by a commercial corridor designation, and large areas nearby are designated as urban residential high. This provides a possibility for future rezonings to zoning districts such as R4, R4A, which could dramatically increase the residential density adjacent to the corridor. And lastly, looking at the preferred alternatives. After consulting with stakeholders and the public since October 2018, and considering several design alternatives, the project team has chosen the preferred alternatives for East 48th and Cordova Street in the study area. More information on the alternatives that were considered can be found on pages 66 through 74 of the DSR itself. The preferred alternatives are shown in the illustrative street cross-sections in figures 10 and 11 in the staff report, and anticipated costs for the preferred alternatives are also shown in figure 12. In general, the preferred alternatives for each segment improve pedestrian accommodations, maintain the existing low posted speed limits of 25 miles per hour with design speeds of 30 miles per hour, upgrade lighting to conform to municipal standards, and add drainage facilities. By prioritizing these elements, the preferred alternatives are largely consistent with existing uses as well as guiding plans and policies. One thing to note, the proposed five-foot sidewalks on Cordova Street are the minimum width per the DCM, the Design Criteria Manual and the Federal Highway Administration's guidelines. The National Association of City Transportation officials' Urban Street Design Guide recommends sidewalk widths of five to seven feet in residential settings and eight to 12 feet in downtown and commercial areas. Recommended condition of approval to raise that minimum is therefore for the sidewalks on Cordova Street to be listed six feet wide in order to provide enhanced pedestrian mobility, especially as wider sidewalks would result in greater maneuvering area for pedestrians using mobility aids. This is particularly important in such close proximity to the existing St. Elias Specialty Hospital, in addition to adjacent residential uses with high permitted densities, and the large RO zone parcel that could see significant commercial residential development in the future. The six-foot provision would also apply to the segment of sidewalk on the south side of East 48th Avenue between, I think, Fairbanks and Eagle. And finally, we did receive a public comment. For this November 4th hearing, 405 public hearing notices were mailed on September 29th or September 23rd. And for the DSR, 709 public hearing notices were mailed on September 23rd also for the requested variance. No comments were received from the community councils, but notice of the public hearing was also posted at select points along the corridor on September 23rd. Again, one comment, excuse me, one comment was received from property owner on the corridor that opposes sidewalks anywhere in the commercial industrial zones in the study area. The full comment is included in section three of this report. And the department recommendation, the department recommends approval of the requested variance from AMC 21-07-060E2B to provide a 10-foot wide pathway on the north side of East 48th Avenue in lieu of sidewalks on both sides of East 48th Avenue, subject to the condition of approval in the staff report. And the second approval, the department recommends approval of the preferred alternatives identified in the contact sensitive solutions design study report for the 48th Avenue and Cordova Street reconstruction project. Again, this approval shall only be for the preferred alternatives identified in the design study report, subject to the two conditions of approval in the staff report under item B. And that is it, thank you.
All right, any questions for staff? Commissioner Strake.
Thank you. I'm looking at another aerial map here. When 48th Street was, 48th Avenue was upgraded between Cordova and A Street, there was a lot of discussion around the sidewalks being placed on both sides of the road then because one is a predominant vacant lot yet to be developed, and I believe the other abutted to the north, to the south of 48th Street was the hospital. Is that correct? I mean, my geography is correct, correct?
Correct, your geography is correct, yes.
And so there was a lot of discussion about the need for sidewalks on both sides, and it was discussed that it was going to be linked. And if you take a look at the intersection, Cordova and 48th, you can see how the intersection was upgraded so that sidewalks would be linked on both sides. Lot of time, expense, and dollars went into that upgrade.
Yes, through the chair, I went out to the project site and took some photographs of that specific intersection. And in the report, I do mention the fact that there's a bit of an awkward transition between the wider sidewalks on the south side of East 48th Avenue to the west of Cordova Street, to the now narrower sidewalk, or proposed sidewalk on the south side up to Eagle Street. But overall, there's, it's a very low-volume, stop-controlled, accessible intersection that provides kind of an easy crossing opportunity. And so the view that I put forward in the staff report is that the, if somebody would desire to transition to the 10-foot pathway on the north side, which is much wider than will be proposed for the south, for that specific portion of the south, then that transition would be pretty easy to make. But I do see your point.
Well, the side of the road I'm concerned is on the south side of 48th that abuts the vacant lot, I believe, that's also owned by the hospital, that has been identified through various, as a possible assisted living area, as well as some of the vacant area there north on 48th, north of 48th, still on 48th between A Street and Cordova. So this is a developing area that has been viewed with, and maybe we'll hear from the petitioner, that for more assisted living type homes. And so the concern is narrowing the sidewalk in an area that may see increased elderly use down the road is of concern. Not knowing what's yet to be developed on the corner of 48th and Cordova, are we premature in limiting the size of the sidewalk that could go there? It's either going to be hospital, I mean, it's owned by a hospital now. It's owned by, I believe, by Providence. Is that correct?
I believe so.
So assuming it's going to be some sort of medical, we don't know in the future what it's going to be, I wonder if we're premature in limiting the width and narrowing that width at this time.
Through the chair, I would leave that discussion up to the project team. They'll be presenting shortly, and they would be able to better address the width. I did in the report request that the sidewalk width be increased to six feet from five feet, and are you suggesting that it should be wider?
At least consistent with maybe some projected use of what we're seeing developing in that area. We need to be cognizant of what's happening and how that area is being developed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Krishna.
Thank you. So first, I want to make sure that I'm understanding where the sidewalk will go. So just to clarify, we're talking about on 48th Avenue, a sidewalk on the south side from Cordova to Eagle, and a sidewalk on the north side from Cordova all the way to Old Seward?
Yes, that's correct. And on the north side, it would actually be a 10-foot pathway proposed currently, so a fairly big facility.
All right, then my question is about the continuity on the north side. It looks like between Fairbanks and Old Seward, there's a couple of lots that have full frontage driveways and rolled curbs. Could you clarify if there'll be a, or how the pathway will work with those uses?
Through the chair, are you referring to the north side or the south side?
I'm referring to the north side between Fairbanks and Old Seward.
Okay, I'll let the project team address that question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no one else in the queue, I did have one question. I noticed it's on page 15 of the staff report that it says that it will have posted speed limits of 25 miles per hour and using a relatively low design of 30 miles per hour. Why are we designing our streets to go 5 miles per hour over the speed limit?
Actually, that's a, I'll let the project team address that, but it's a common engineering practice that they can describe more fully.
Perfect. Then it looks like we have no other questions in the queue for staff. Could we hear from the petitioner? And when you come up, state your name for the record and let us know how much time you'd like to reserve for rebuttal.
Hello, my name is Matt Edge. I'm the CRW Engineering Group and the project manager for the design team. I'll just use whatever I have left over after the presentation for rebuttal. I'll go through this fairly quickly. A lot of the points that we have in the presentation have already been covered by Colin. Excuse me. So then the point of the presentation is just to give you a little project background and let you know how we arrived at our preferred alternative. So again, I'm here, Matt Edge, with CRW Engineering Group. I'm the project manager for the design team. I'm here with Julie Mackler with the project administrator for MOA PMNE, and Chelsea Ward-Wall er, the public information officer for PMNE. Other design team members are Melinda Sue for PMNE, and then contract manager Brendan McKee and project engineer Rob Burdick. We engaged Solstice Alaska Consulting to handle our public involvement effort. So where we are in the timeline, we started this process last fall with gathering public data. We presented the concept report to the Planning and Zoning Commission in April. Now we're presenting the design study report. We anticipate finalizing it this winter and then moving forward with design and the improvements in 2021. Construction probably not starting until 2023. No funding for design or construction has been secured at this time. So the project corridor, just a little quick map, you've already seen it, but it's Cordova Street from International Airport Road to 48th Avenue, and then 48th Avenue from Cordova Street over to Old Seward Highway. And the project is needed is because the, or the purpose of the project is to upgrade Cordova Street and East 48th Avenue, which will require us bringing them up to MOA collector roadway standards. And it's needed because the roadways and drainage systems are failing, and it's no longer economically feasible to maintain them. I think the stat that I heard from the street maintenance was that roadways have been overlaid seven or eight times in the last 20 years and are still failing. This graphic is really just depicts the, what Colin mentioned with regard to zoning. Every different color on this, on this map is a different zoning area, so we have lots of mixed usage. The numbers on each property, I don't know if you can see them very well, but they designate the date which the property was developed. A lot of the property was developed before 1983 and when the two-fifths driveway frontage was established by ordinance, and 15 of them were established before 1978, where onsite turning movements were established by ordinance. This just really impacts how we design our improvements, where we can put sidewalks, and how they interact with the roadway. So speaking to Commissioner Strake's message, this is, this is a map of the project area, photo of the project area. It's a little confusing because north is down here, but, so you see 48th Avenue crossing the screen, and Cordova Street, International Airport Road is up towards the north. So we have some pretty major development that could occur here in the near future, including the Providence Alaska site, which is designated in purple. A new health clinic was just built for the red square. There's hotel development in the area in the blue, and then future apartment complexes planned for that green area. So this is just some of the issues we're dealing with along the corridor. We have real, I don't know if you can see, I'm going to try to lose the laser pointer nice. Okay, is this, if I point to this screen, is that okay? This one over here, or should I point to this one?
That one's probably best for us.
Okay, try to hit the microphone and the laser pointer at the same time. Okay, so along, we have some full furnished parking along Cordova Street in here. We have definitely deteriorated roadway. It's failing along Cordova Street and 51st Avenue. We have parking behind the curb here. We have pedestrian facilities from St. Elias Hospital that go out to nothing. There's no sidewalks along the corridor. Here you can see some pedestrians. There is no storm drain along Cordova Street at all, so it's all curb flow that just runs all the way to inlets here at the intersection. On 48th Avenue, we have driveway heaving that's occurring. You can see here and then here, there's significant driveway heaving and then deteriorating roadway here. That's indicative of poor subgrade soils, frost susceptible soils that are freezing and breaking apart the roadway. We have lots of on-street parking utilization along 48th Avenue. And then through here from, from Gamble to Old Seward Highway, those are the pictures of the existing storm drain pipe in that area. We have holes in the storm drain and significant deterioration. We also have contaminated soils existing between Gamble and Old Seward Highway. There's the source that hasn't been determined, but there is a known contaminated site at the Six Robbies. So just some of the issues we're dealing with along the corridor. So here's just some more information. I think that Colin covered everything here except for the right-of-way width. The right-of-way width on Cordova Street is 65 feet, and on 48th Avenue, it's 60 feet. So we started the project, we started developing the concept report, went through extensive public involvement effort. effort, which culminated in a public open house in December of, December of 2018. We also met with business stakeholders, agency stakeholders, and several businesses along the corridor, including Providence Hospital, Alaska Spring and Performance, the Salvation Army, and then the Mazda dealership on the corner of Old Seward. So, from that effort, we generated, this is detailed in the concept report, but generally stakeholders in the area were adamant the on-street parking should remain. Businesses were concerned about reducing their driveway widths. Dedicated bicycle facilities were not desirable. The corridor is not identified on the bike plan. And the addition of landscaping was not desirable in industrial areas. Mostly, that was due to snow storage and site distance issues. Stakeholders did generally support traffic coming on East 48th Avenue, street lighting, especially for security, maintaining business access, drainage improvements. Many people wanted us to expand the improvements of East 51st Avenue, but that's not currently within the project's scope. Pedestrian facilities on both sides of Cordova Street were supported, and pedestrian facilities on one side of East 48th Avenue were generally supported, not necessarily by everyone. So, from that, we developed project goals. First and foremost is to conform with Anchorage Municipal Code Title 21 and the MOA Design Criteria Manual. We also want to incorporate complete streets and vision zero objectives, and we want to address the stakeholder input that was on the previous slide whenever possible. We evaluated roadway reconstruction and resurfacing, new curbs and storm drain improvements, sidewalks, pathways, street lighting, signage, landscaping, and utility locations as required as part of that development, and we chose project goals. So, as part of that, we developed three project alternatives for the roadway cross-section. The first one included an eight-foot pathway on one side of the road, five-foot sidewalk on the other side, separated by buffers for snow storage, 11-foot vehicle lanes. We kept on-street parking, added streetlights. Problem with this is it requires right-of-way acquisition. The whole cross-section is wider than the available cross-sections, who would have to purchase property from businesses and residents along the corridor. This does meet the requirements of both Title 21 and the MOA DCM. So, the second alternative was to try to skinny up our cross-section a little bit to avoid acquisition of right-of-way. So, we narrowed the buffers down between the sidewalk and the curb. We only put sidewalks on both sides as opposed to a pathway and a sidewalk. We kept the parking and 11-foot travel lanes, and then added street lighting. This doesn't require any right-of-way acquisition at all for this alternative. It isn't compliant with AMC Title 21, but it will require us to get a variance from the MOA Design Criteria Manual, which shouldn't hopefully be an issue. And then, alternative three, we developed really based on the concerns with the businesses along 48th Avenue specifically. This has, instead of pedestrian facilities on both sides, we've moved the pedestrian facilities to just the north side. It includes a two-foot buffer behind this, the curb, and between that and the pathway to avoid car doors opening up into the pathway while bikers are on there. Snow storage buffer on, on the opposite side of the pathway, that's really going to be asphalt pavement in most of the area where we have full-furnished driveways. We increased the vehicle lanes to 12 feet to accommodate the higher truck volumes on the roadway. We maintained on-street parking, added streetlights. And again, this section does not require any right-of-way acquisition along the corridor. Will require variance from the Planning and Zoning Commission, is why we're here today, and another variance from the MOA for the Design Criteria Manual requirements. So, we took these three alternatives to the public, went through the MOA contact sensitive solutions process, had another public open house in May. We met with 48th Avenue businesses in August, and then met with, on the corridor again, with the Midtown Community Council, and specifically Alaska Spring and Performance in October, and now we're here presenting to you. So, our preferred alternatives for the roadway on Cordova Street, it is alternative two, which includes the two sidewalks, pedestrian facilities on both sides, no right-of-way acquisition. And then on 48th Avenue, it's alternative three with a single pathway on the north side. Just, and that avoids the conflicts between the pedestrians and all the full-furnished parking and the traffic. So, and then again, no right-of-way acquisition. So, MOA Planning Department had a couple comments about adding a sidewalk on East 48th Avenue from Cordova Street to Eagle Street. We have no objections to that at all. Then widening the proposed sidewalks along the entire corridor to six feet wide. Again, we have no objections. So, just due to funding issues, the project will be constructed in phases. Right now, there's four phases identified based on projected project costs. The first phase will be from, on Cordova Street, from 48th Avenue up to the right-of-way, or from 50th Avenue, and then the second phase will be from the right-of-way on 50th up to International Airport Road. That's really due to drainage. I mean, everything's draining in this direction, so we need to start on the downstream end and build a workway back. Third phase will be from, on 48th Avenue, from Cordova Street to Eagle Street, and then the fourth phase will be 48th Avenue from Eagle Street down to, down to Old Seward Highway. And that's based on, there's a drainage, again, there's a high point right there, so drainage flows this direction and this direction. So, that's it. I don't know how long I took, but...
And you have about 7 minutes and 58 seconds left. Any questions for the petitioner, Commissioner Spinelli?
Yeah. Through the chair, when you go to six-foot wide sidewalks, can you just, how does that change the rest of the section? Do you just take, does the buffer get smaller?
Yeah, essentially, yeah. But I mean, you know, when snow goes in the buffer, it's going to take up whatever room it takes up. So, it might, in the winter time, go over a bit of the sidewalk, but it's not going to affect our design overall.
Not going to require right-of-way acquisition?
No.
And then, one other question I had. When you add storm drain in a project like this, is it typical to design stub outs for the individual lots that front the project?
In areas with high groundwater, we often will send out a questionnaire, asking if they have issues with sump pumps and whatnot. We haven't heard that on this project. No one's commented on it. If we had heard that, and we can still send out a questionnaire, and if so, we could put stub outs to private property if it's required. But it's really just for sump pumps.
The reason I ask is because the municipality actually has a new policy out for comment right now, where they would require any infill lot to connect to storm drains. So, if you're redeveloping, you'd be required to connect to storm drains. And so, at that point, it would be, seems prudent to design them in so that every time somebody redevelops, they don't have to rip the road back up.
And we, there will be manholes along the corridor that people can tie into. If, well, I can't comment on the specific policy, but I mean, we can easily put a stub out to, from one of the manholes. It's not, not an issue. The road's already dug up, so, easy to do.
Commissioner Strick?
Thank you. And through the chair, when A Street was developed there by the Hotel Row, from about the equivalent of about 50th Street to 48th Street, that was a new section that was put in on A Street, there was a right-of-way on 50th-
Yes.
-that the city maintained. And when we looked at the development-
Yes.
And so, one of the concerns was drainage. Drainage in this whole area is an issue.
Yes.
It's overcapacity, and it's, in some cases, it flows the wrong way, as I understand, as I recall. So, it escapes me why the, it appears the city abandoned its right-of-way and gave those right-of-way easements back to the property owners?
On 50th Avenue?
On 50th, on what would have been 50th Avenue. 50th Avenue was never punched through.
Right.
They're next to St. Elias and a parking area. But when we developed A Street, the whole idea was to tap through on that to help the drainage. And, because now you need it.
Yeah. I wasn't a part of that process for, you know, vacating the right-of-way on 50th, but I do understand that, that it occurred here recently.
So, there's an oops. But part of the discussion during that period of time were the sidewalks. And the sidewalks that existed on 48th Avenue between A Street and Cordova, a lot of debate went into the size, the width, both sides of the road. And the whole idea then, and during the discussion then, was what Providence might do with its vacant lot that you have identified as purple.
Yes.
Knowing that this is hospital-related, yet you propose no sidewalks whatsoever on this side of the road now.
So, as far as the, the, well, with the planning comments, we'll be required to do that.
Pardon?
With the planning comments, we will be required to put a sidewalk on the south side of the road in front of that Providence, that lot.
I thought your recommendation was off to number three.
It is. So, generally, you know, my philosophy is to provide continuous pedestrian connectivity along a route. There is not-
Or at least stop where it should.
Yeah. So, there's, there's, I guess, as far as our approach goes, putting a sidewalk along the south side of 48th Avenue to, along the Providence site, will end at Eagle Street. The only place that a pedestrian can go is to cross mid-block to go to the north side of the road. So, I'd prefer generally to have pedestrians cross at the intersection of Cordova and 48th Avenue. I don't have an issue putting sidewalks along the corridor necessarily, but if I, you talk about a design approach, that's generally my philosophy, I guess.
Who would be responsible? Now, this is an undeveloped-now lot.
Mm-hmm.
Who's responsible typically for putting those sidewalks in, if it's required, when they develop the property? Would they not be required to bring those sidewalks into compliance?
Presumably, unless they requested a variance for that requirement. So, we did meet with Providence. They have no specific development plans for that property. They have properties all over Anchorage, and they could not identify a specific use that they were going to develop for that, that specific property. It's a nice, really large property. I can imagine that it will be developed with, you know, high density or something that will generate a lot of traffic, but I don't know what that's going to be at this time.
So, I guess my concern is sidewalks, no sidewalks, who puts it in, how it's required, yet I'm seeing a plan that says, "We're proposing no sidewalks." Does that mean nothing in the future? Does, I guess that's a question to staff, or does that mean, I don't know what that means. There were forever forbearing sidewalks on that side of the street, regardless of what ends up going in to that lot. Because it's a prime developed lot that is, has been speculated that it would be used for assisted living. And whatever, who knows? I don't know what they're going to do with it. As well as what you identified for apartments was also identified for assisted living, back when that road was first put in. And that's one of the reasons you see sidewalks on both sides, other than the fact the legislature kicked in a whole bunch of money to pay for it all.
Mr. Hodges, can you weigh in on that?
Yes. So, through the chair, what Matt mentioned in terms of the transition point where this current, the existing sidewalks between A and Cordova, the transition at Cordova, that was one of the reasons they decided, they initially opted not to propose a sidewalk on the south side of East 48th between Cordova and Eagle. When the planning department reviewed it, we deliberated and requested that that sidewalk be, in fact, be installed in the proposal, due to the fact that it would provide sidewalks to that parcel prior to development, because, you're correct, it would, if a development went in, they would be required to provide sidewalks pending any extraordinary circumstances. But while the municipality is undertaking this project, it seemed the best course of action to provide that proactively. And in addition, it actually would provide some connectivity from Eagle Street on the south side to Cordova. So, it would actually connect with the street. So, it was a bit of a give and take in terms of trying to discuss what would be best for that parcel in this corridor, given the fact that the sidewalk would not be proposed to extend further east than Eagle Street. So, it's a bit of an odd situation.
Well, and I like your approach to an extent. Budgets are tight. So, if the intent is, "Let's leave the sidewalk off, let's save some money for the city," and when the development finally comes in, they're going to have to price in the sidewalk at that point. Now, I'm all for it, let's help the developer too at the same time. Let's put in the commercial reasonable support infrastructure in place, but budgets are tight as well. So, what makes sense for this property in the long term? Is that the intent is, "Let's leave the sidewalk off, and when they develop it, we're going to make a requirement that they put the sidewalks in, once, if and when they finally develop the property?"
Through the chair, in this specific circumstance, we arrived at the conclusion that it would probably be best to provide the sidewalks proactively. So, there's, there's no proposal in front of you to pass something without the sidewalks on that parcel.
Well, option three is a recommendation with no sidewalk.
So, the variance, the variance that I was reading off previously, reading off the standards for, that was for providing a sidewalk only on the north side of East 48th. But a condition of approval for that variance, and the DSR as well, is to provide sidewalks on that Providence parcel for six feet. It is a little confusing in the way it's presented.
That's A1 on page 15.
That helps.
All right. Commissioner Anderson?
If there's only a pedestrian facility on the north side of 48th Avenue, was there any discussion on, like striped crosswalks at certain locations between the south side to the sidewalk on the north?
The sidewalk going to Eagle Street on the, on the south side of Cordova Street was planning requirements, so we had not incorporated any mid-block crossing striping. Normally, we'd want to have a pedestrian, a higher pedestrian volume along the road to establish that before we marked a crosswalk. But yes, so no. I guess the short answer is no.
So, from, basically from Cordova to Old Seward, there's no north-south crosswalk, marked striped crosswalk?
Correct. I mean, it's legally, pedestrians can cross at any intersection legally, but there's nothing marked.
Right. And those could be marked in the future at intersections?
It could, if pedestrian demand developed there.
Commissioner Krishna?
Thank you. Same question. I'm wondering how the proposed buffered pathway on the north side impacts those businesses' access, particularly from, looks like Fairbanks to Old Seward?
So, the, there's two driveway, really, issues with driveways. One's Warren and Sons' driveway, which is a full-furnished driveway access, but it doesn't have parking right behind the curb at all. So, there, so we will just essentially provide a transition from the back of the pathway. We'll likely, on those locations, move the, because there's no parking along the roadway, we'll move the pathway to be attached to the back of curb, and then put the concrete buffer on the backside of the pathway, just to delineate it from the parking area, so that people understand where the pedestrian facilities are. So, there'll be a little bit of a transition. It gets a little tricky down at Six Robbies, because I do have quite a bit of grade from the 48th Avenue. So, we may require, but that's not, not continuous driveway, that's a specific driveway. So, we may require some retaining walls in that area, just to, just to make the transition there. But it's not anything different than what we do on many road projects. So, Turnigan Boulevard, for instance, if you want to look at that one. So, there were some questions about design speed, too?
I'll get to that in a second, but Commissioner Quinn, you're the next one in the queue.
What's the use of the Salvation Army parcel across from Gamble Street?
So, I think it's changed recently. I believe it's associated with the Covenant House, but there may be a representative here today that could speak better on that. So, there's inpatient drug and alcohol treatment, is my understanding.
So, it's not a residential housing or anything like that, that they're providing there? I'm just wondering about pedestrian access.
I don't know the schedule that they, you know, some of the, some of the treatment facilities have, people have jobs, they leave in the morning, and they come back in the evenings, and they stay there. I believe that was what was there up until last year, and I believe, and I could be wrong, but I believe that the care now is more inpatient full-time.
So, would those people typically drive to a place like that, or walk?
I don't know if they would be driven, or, yeah. I think the mostly, the, most of the vehicular traffic associated with that lot in the future will be visitors. And so, all their, their visitor parking is along the frontage there on 48th, south side of 48th- side of Forty-Eighth Avenue, so.
I was more concerned about consumers using the facility, and they might take a bus and need to walk to the facility from one of the major arterial roads, so.
Yeah, bus service is only on Tudor Road right now, so that's the closest bus route to this, this area.
Okay, so not on Old Seward or on A Street?
Not A Street, Chelsea's, there is a C Street? Yes.
Okay.
So, but not on Old Seward.
Okay.
Yeah, so the administration has, has made it a priority to bring bus service back to Old Seward in the future, but I don't know when that'll happen.
Any other questions, Commissioner Quinn? My question is just because I am not that knowledgeable about design speeds and stuff like that, is there a reason why we design the speeds of our roads above the speed limit?
Yeah, generally, it's because people don't drive the speed limit, but it doesn't affect this road corridor at all, really, except for sight distance at intersections when we have somebody pulled up at a stop sign. The design speed will make our sight distance triangle that, you know, for visual, a little bit a lot wider, but generally, always, we design for five miles and over, or five miles per hour over the speed limit.
So, what little I do know about design speeds is that people tend to drive the design speed, and so if people drive above the posted speed limit, and we say it's because we want to design it because people drive faster, we're now encouraging people to drive faster?
Yeah, I, I understand the, the perspective. Generally, we want to make a roadway safe, and if you limit it to, to people who only drive in the speed limit, then, then there could be issues. Again, this is a straight road, this is relatively flat, it doesn't really affect anything as far as the design elements on this road, or, you know, the design speed will really affect curvature, both horizontal and vertical. It just, it doesn't really almost apply on, on this particular roadway, so. Except for, like I said, the sight distance at the intersections, people will be able to see a little bit further when they're stopped waiting to turn.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for the petitioner? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And if we could hear from members of the public wishing to speak, this is your time. And I just also want to add that it looks like we have a few members from the public wishing to speak, so if protocols you come up, you state your name, spell it for the record, and let us know if you're representing a group or organization, or if you're speaking on your own behalf. And then also for those who are not currently at the podium, start queuing up so that we can kind of move through people.
Hi, my name is Christine Stoner, it's spelled K-R-I-S-T-I-N-E, Stoner, S is Sam, T is internal, O-E-H-N-E-R. I represent a company called JJ&amp;S and another company called Alaska Springer Performance. We own property on Forty-Eighth. I want to express, first of all, and I hope that we're not going to be hurried, because this is really one of the first times that we've been able to speak publicly. This has been an extremely frustrating process. My son is not here, my daughter-in-law is not here because they have obligations, my son's out of state, they wrote letters to you people based on a flyer that we got from the engineering firm, and on Friday afternoon, we realized we were supposed to have those letters to the city at 1:00 p.m. based on this city's flyer. And if you will take these letters and read them, I think it will help. And I don't know if you're allowed to take them at this point or not.
Steph, do you know if they are already in our packet? And if so, what page?
No, we did not receive any letters about the public hearing.
And what is this, all right, Lori is going to make sure we label these. Thank you, thank you.
Another thing of concern is public notification on all meetings. I have another document here listing one, two, three, four, five, six, seven entities who have not received notification for all meetings. Third frustrating area, and I, and I have to admit, I have not been the nicest person through this system because I found it incomplete and, and just totally frustrating. We went to meet and greets where we thought we were going to get to testify publicly on our thoughts about this project and how it would impact our business. We would go to a meet and greet, I call them a meet and greet, here at the library, and the engineering firm would have a big map out there, and we were told we could handwrite our comments on the map. My background is Army Corps of Engineers, and we had public meetings, we had the ability to testify, and our thoughts were recorded. I want to go through some of the things that we feel are very serious about this project and detrimental to our business. Sidewalks. Almost every business in our area, we're in the industrial, commercial area, have big rigs coming and going at different times. We service a lot of big rigs. Sidewalks are dangerous. They're dangerous for our employees, they're dangerous for people. You don't mix industrial areas with sidewalks and bike lanes. Roll curbs. Our business has been there since 1978. We have not owned it the whole time, but through progression of different owners, there have been three of them, our business has had a roll curb. We have been told that roll curbs are going away. We are told that we are supposed to work with the traffic department. I tried to get an exemption with the traffic department a year and a half ago and was told no. Didn't really understand why, but I was told no. So, they want us to have our customers enter one area of our business and exit another area of the business, and our roll curves will totally go away. Safety, safety is a huge, huge concern for us. We're working on big rigs, little rigs, Volkswagens, DOT snowplows, lots of different sizes of vehicles. With the proposal that we are being given here, it will bankrupt our company. We've offered to sell it to the city, but we haven't gotten any takers. The long-range value to our property, we've discussed this with several realtors, and we're hearing the truth now, that somebody wants us to be a corridor, they want Forty-Eighth to be a corridor. And the question that we were asking realtors, "What happens to us, the businesses at the east end of this street?" And what I'm being told by many of the realtors, actually four of them, our property value will go down by about 25%. We'll lose business, number one, our business will go bankrupt, number two, and the value of the property will go down, number three. So, I appreciate your time, your effort. I also am especially appreciative to see young people here. My husband and I and our family have donated a humongous amount of our time to young people, and I think it's great that their teachers are getting here. Thank you for your time.
Actually, I have some questions for you, if you could come back up. Could you identify where your business is? Just, you said it was on Forty-Eighth, and I want...
It's Forty-Eighth and Fairbanks.
Forty-Eighth and Fairbanks, and so would that be, that's on the south corner? So, sorry, it's on the south side of...
Southeast.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then it's my understanding that that area is not going to be affected as far as sidewalks?
It depends on what you guys do today, but in the effect of putting sidewalks on the other side of the street, it's also affecting those businesses with roll curbs and big rigs that come in and out of their companies, their businesses. I mean, there is a letter by the tile company, did you guys receive that letter?
I have looked at some of the letters, but I'm not sure...
He sent a letter in several weeks ago, so it should be in your packet. I have not talked to this gentleman about this project. I had talked to his employees in the past because I was kind of like the go-getter around the neighborhood to try to get people interested in this project. And he was not notified by his employees. He did not get noticed until just a couple of weeks ago about this project, but he put it together. His letter is very, very good because he's been around for a long time, and he observed the area.
And so, specifically as it relates to you, do you have any objections to a proposal that would have sidewalks on the north end of the street, but from Eagle to Old Seward would not have sidewalks on the south side of the street?
You know, I'm going to let our community councilman talk to you. I object to sidewalks of any kind in that area. It's an industrial, commercial area. It's not safe. There's very little pedestrian usage right now. The engineering company did do a survey, it took us a year to get it, but when we finally got it, it shows very little use. And I'm going to make another comment of another meeting. There was a meeting in December of 2018 at our business. We had three companies, ourselves and two other companies. We sat there for an hour and we talked, and all three of us expressed our concerns about this project. The very last sentence of the meeting was, "Well, the city's going to do what they're going to do." I mean, why do we participate if this is the attitude? It's very disheartening.
I have a question for you from Commissioner Spinelli.
Yeah, I had two questions. The first one was, I guess, if the municipality was going to either improve this road to their current standards or what we're looking at approving tonight, which I don't think that you're happy with, or not improve it at all, which would you choose?
Non-improvement.
Okay. And then I guess the other thing was just a comment for you that there, there's a mix of industrial and residential properties throughout this area.
That is correct.
So, it's not just industrial.
And I'm talking about my area of the street, which is industrial, commercial, and that's part of the problem for this particular project. You've got institutional, which is the hospital, you've got residential, there's some duplexes, and then you've got the industrial, commercial, and it does make it complicated. And if the city wants to buy our land, like I say, we'll sell it, that'll ease it for you.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes, thank you for your testimony. I have just one question to make sure I understand your concern with respect to the roll curbs. Is your preference the roll curbs based on concerns about the large trucks being able, or the big rigs, I think you referenced, being able to appropriately access your property?
It's for all vehicles with access. Okay, this is, let me see if I can show you something. This is our lot, okay? Fairbanks is here, go on down, Old Seward here. Vehicles come and go this way, we have parking this way. What the city wants us to do is have vehicles come here, across, and then exit this way. It doesn't make sense, and it's based on an old 1978 document, which no one has ever used. It just doesn't make sense.
I don't, I don't think I quite followed how your property is oriented in what you were saying about how they currently park.
Okay, I'm trying, okay, this is, pretend like this is my property.
Yeah.
We have roll curbs.
And that's on, that's Forty-Eighth there?
Correct.
At the bottom?
Correct. Everybody in our area has roll curbs, and they have wide driveways, people come and go this way.
Mm-hmm.
What the city is telling us that they want us to do when they change the curbs, because they're going to have a, I think, a 45-degree angle curve, is instead of customers coming in this way, they want them to come in here and drive around and then leave here.
Coming in off of a side street, you're saying, not on Forty-Eighth?
Yes. It doesn't make any sense. And part of my frustration is not understanding process, not understanding the bureaucracy of our city, and not understanding how we can do things in the city that are complimentary to everyone.
Okay, thank you.
And Commissioner Strick.
Yeah, thank you. This is a question for staff. I just wanted to clarify, the city is not taking any land and they're operating solely within the right-of-way?
Yes, correct.
Is that correct?
Through the chair, yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing, oh?
Good evening, I'm Peter Pemberton, last name spelled P-E-M-B-E-R-T-O-N, and I represent the Salvation Army. And I wanted to give clarity to Commissioner Quinn's question on our facility and the needs that we may have concerning pedestrian walkways. We are in a transition at our facility at 660 East Forty-Eighth. We are in the transition because we have to do some significant repairs to the building, but the idea is that initially, we will be back in the building doing dual diagnosis drug and alcohol rehabilitation for approximately 60 persons. So, we will have a good flux of pedestrians flowing in and out of our facility there. So, I do think that you should take that into consideration. The other thing that I was concerned about is, I'm still a little, I still misunderstand this a little bit, are these roll, road curbs that we're looking at replacing, or will they be barrier curbs?
Sorry, again, my name is Matt Edge, CRW Engineering Group. So, full frontage driveway with rolled curbs are prohibited by Anchorage ordinance for properties developed after 1983. So, if your property was developed before 1983, or in some cases, 1978, there, we can go through a process called non-conforming determination through the planning department. If, if it's approved, that your property qualifies, or was, was developed prior to the ordinance coming about, and you don't have a parking plan that was approved through the planning department on site, then we can put back, legally can put back rolled curb. So, it's a, it's just, it's a process we have to go through. Unfortunately, on the Alaska Springer Performance property, they have an approved parking plan that was established before they ever owned the property, 1978, that dictates how their traffic flows on their property. We have no problem...
I'm actually going to interrupt you, and I'm going to have you speak to this during your rebuttal period.
Sure, no problem.
Thank you.
So, hopefully, we can put it back, but...
One of the reasons that I'm concerned about that is I had my maintenance man go out and measure the distance from the road to our building front, and he came back and said that it was 33 and a half feet, which doesn't give us much space at all if they put in a barrier curb with the idea that some of that barrier curb will also be used as a snow containment in the winter. That doesn't give us much room at all for people to navigate in and out of that facility, and that is the only parking that we have on that facility is the, is the building front. So, those are my only concerns, and I just wanted to clarify for Commissioner Quinn and share those thoughts.
Thank you. I think we have some questions in the queue. Commissioner Gardner? Commissioner Strick?
Yeah, clarification, treatment up to 60 individuals is what you indicated?
Yes, sir, and...
Does that mean you're a 60-bed facility?
That's correct, sir. It is a residential program.
24-hour, 24/7?
Yes, sir.
And what other parking do you have then for your facility?
Well, we have a little bit of area in the back of the facility, but it's really not used for parking. We also use that area to do the warehousing necessities for our stores here in Anchorage. So, there's a lot of production that goes on in and out of that facility. In the warehouse portion, we will have trucks back up to loading docks and pull out donated goods, they'll sort them inside, and then those, those goods will be transferred, transferred over to our Northern Lights and our Diamond Store facilities.
I'm just wondering how the impact on the zoning and the parking requirements for your facility, how you're meeting that requirement now?
It's a good question.
Does that be a question? Are you meeting it now?
Well, right now, we don't have anyone in the facility except for that production area.
So, you're moving to a use that's not currently, you're, you're moving to a planned use in the future? Has it been used in that use in the past?
Yes, sir, it has.
Okay.
Yeah. There will be no, no change in the way that we've used that facility.
I guess that's a question to the city to make sure that you're in compliance.
Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Quinn?
So, it's a residential facility, your consumers are free to come and go as they please?
It depends on what phase of treatment they're in, but if they choose to withdraw from the program, they can certainly come and go as they please. But there are phases of the treatment where, when they have so many weeks in, then they do have more liberties to, to exit the program and, and to go out for work and things like that.
Okay, and they're, how do they typically arrive?
They have... They have a lot of walking in the past. We do have some vehicles that assist clientele with getting to destinations, key destinations and drop-off points, but there is a lot of pedestrian use.
And so currently, you know, they're traversing through this kind of industrial area to get to the facility. Have you seen any problems with that?
I personally haven't, because we've not used it for that, for that type of facility for a year. We've had some, like I said, some significant structural issues that we've been addressing. But my understanding is, prior to that, and prior to my arrival, there was quite a bit of pedestrian.
And so how will your program be impacted by, you know, or how would it be enhanced, I should say, by requiring a sidewalk on that side of the road?
Well, I think that it would certainly offer public safety for the pedestrians that come in and out of our treatment center, but I also want to be sensitive to the comments that were earlier made about the trucks that go in and out of the facilities, too. We have large trucks that move in and out of that production area, and I, they have told me, the drivers have shared with me, that, that it can be some blind areas that they struggle to see people walking down the street.
I just want to clarify something. You mentioned how would they be impacted by the sidewalks in front of their establishment. However, as I understand the plan, and maybe I'm misinterpreting where you're located, aren't you located on the south side of 48th?
We are.
So there would no be, there would not be any sidewalks immediately abutting on your property, based on the proposed plan by the state?
Based on the proposed plan. That's, that's right, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify?
My name is Ronald Reisner, R-E-I-S-N-E-R, and I own the corner lot that, on the corner of 48th and Gamble, presently occupied by Matt Valley Tile &amp; Stone. Prior to Matt Valley Tile &amp; Stone, we had artistic tile there for 20-some years. And we constantly have semis with 40-foot containers coming off of the Old Stewart Highway, heading towards Cordova, and then back in their rigs into our loading doors. So they take up part of 48th, but they also take up 40 feet of our parking lot, and I think we have roughly 50 feet from the building to the sidewalk, or to the roll curb. And I wasn't aware of anything going on until about six weeks ago. And Matt from the municipality called me and informed me that as it stands, there would be a six-foot sidewalk on the north side of 48th, and they would be moving the roadway six feet towards the south. And they would have a 30-foot curb opening for access to our property. And I told them that was no good. It wouldn't work. We need the full length of a rolling curb for the semis and tractor trailers to get in, plus the customers. Also, Alaska Waste Management uses that area there to drive up, pick up the three containers, the dumpsters that are on our lot, ours and the neighbors', and they're parked there because we have the room for them. I think this is ridiculous. This, this is, I don't know what to say, except how are we going to, or how's Matt Valley going to get deliveries? How's Alaska Spring going to get customers? And when Salvation Army cars that are parked facing their building back up, they're going to be backing right up into the street. The sidewalk going in on the north side is going to have trucks and vehicles parked on it, no matter how you put it or what you do. There's no way out of it. And the gentleman from the Salvation Army wasn't too sure about when they have extra people there, where they park. When we operated the business, their meetings and visitors would usually be in the evenings, and those extra people would park their cars on our lot. And if, I would assume they probably still do it after closing time. And they asked permission, and it was granted and stuff. So that would allow for them, for their parking and their, for their evening meetings to continue parking on our lot. But we need a roll curb. That's, there's no if, ands, or buts about it. The full length of 48th on it.
And they have that fire hydrant?
Well, they're going to knock the fire hydrant out with a snow plow. So, I'm just joking. There is a fire hydrant there, and there's a lot of trees and weeds coming out of it. We had it cut down this summer and stuff, and I used our good old Roundup to try to kill them, but I don't think it'll do it. I'm also concerned about how customers are going to be serving or getting to our businesses during construction. That's, I don't know how they're going to do that, and I don't think they do either. And then how's it going to affect our property taxes in the future? Any questions?
Not yet, but I do want to say that we did receive, oh, there is a question for you, but I just wanted to let you know, someone asked if we received your letter, and I did receive your letter. It is in our packet. I just don't always remember every single name of the person.
I appreciate that.
But I did want to double-check, that we did have it, and I did read it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Strick?
Just, just for point of clarification, your property is on the north side of 48th?
It would be on the north, let's see, south?
Northwest?
North, yes. Northwest corner.
Okay. And that fire hydrant's on the corner?
Yes.
Okay. Google Maps?
Oh, so.
Yeah, for those watching in the audience, a lot of us have been looking at our phones, but that's because we have better, like, easier maneuverable maps there.
Well, fortunately, when it came out with computers, it cut down on a lot of paperwork.
That's true.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Anyone else wishing to testify on this matter?
My name is John Stohner, S-T-O-E-H-N-E-R. I also have investment with JJNS Enterprises and Alaska Spring Performance. My major concern, one of them, is we get a lot of large deliveries with tractor trailers, 40-foot, 60-foot. We get 6,000 pounds of steel every couple of months. It takes us about an hour, hour and a half to unload that truck. He has to park in the road. Even with the existing space that we have now, he's in the road, so he's blocking one lane. We get tool trucks, Snap-on, Mack, all of them. These are big vehicles, and they're parked in the road, and they're there to sell us tools and services. I was looking at the survey of traffic. Is 1,600 vehicles a day? I'm kind of guessing that survey was taken down towards Cordova and out to C Street. The residential's, they're all driving out that way. I wished I had 1,600 vehicles come past my property every day. My business would increase. So I kind of disagree with the traffic numbers, because I don't know exactly where they took them. But I'm assuming between the residential's out to C Street. You've got the Golden Corral, you've got, all of the restaurants are all right there at C and Tudor. General Service Companies all along Tudor. Home Depot, Office Depot, those are the stores that the residential's are going to be going to. They're not coming down our road, or our end of 48th, to buy a couple of hundred pounds of tile. They're not walking to have their car fixed with us, and I rather doubt that they're going to the cleaner, cleaning company across the street to have their carpets fixed or shampooed. So we kind of have to look at what is the business on that end of 48th, from starting at about Eagle out to 48th. The only foot traffic that's going in that direction are the employees for the various companies that are parking on the north side of 48th. There is a parking lane through there, and then two lanes of traffic. There is a setback of most of the property owners on that side for a sidewalk. A 10-foot sidewalk, no. 8-foot sidewalk, no. 6-foot would be more in line with a, the number of pedestrians that you might have walking on that side of the road. I would venture to say there is less than 15 people walk that road a day. In fact, I only see one guy, and he's going to work, and he parks out there on the road. So we're not getting the volume of traffic, foot or bicycle or vehicles, but yet we get the large trucks on that end of the road. So it is industrial, it is commercial, and it's not residential down there, or convenience stores. So I'd like for the city to take that in mind in the development of 48th, and maybe take a little bit better view of the traffic that's on that end. Access to the businesses, the tile, the Salvation Army, us, the guys across the street on both sides, across 48th and across Fairbanks, all need roll curbs. The parking curbs on the north side, along the residential section from Fairbanks down to...
Sorry, you're only allowed six minutes for your testimony.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi, my name is Al Tamani, Senior. I'm the president of the Midtown Community Council, and we got involved in, in this project here just recently. We spent a lot of time talking to the owners of the property on Alaska Spring. We've also spoke with the representatives of the engineering firms. And all of those businesses on 48th and Cordova are roll-type curbs. That whole area is roll-type curb, and that's where customers park, and for all of the businesses that are commercial and industrial, light industrial. And so in reviewing the plans and the proposed recommendation number three, we have came up with some recommendations, and I'll hand these out to you.
Oh, thank you so much for providing copies.
I think that, that you've, you've heard a lot of comments from the businesses, and it will have an effect substantially on virtually all of the industrial, light industrial, and also the commercial. So I think in the letter, we laid out some requests for modifications to the context-sensitive transportation project site plan. It appears like that the plan is very insensitive to the industrial, commercial, and business needs encompassing the project as to effects of street accessibility, parking, sidewalk placement, and ability you could to conduct business. The solutions that we would recommend is to continue roll curbs on all sides of 48th and Cordova. Without that, it's going to be a total business disaster. I think we also can eliminate the 2-foot buffer on both sides of both streets. Okay? This has been done on 33rd and 34th Avenue Plan going through Walmart. They've eliminated the buffer. You can do that. I think eliminate the 10-foot pathway on both streets. And what you can do is you can add five feet to the snow storage area on the north side for a total of 12 feet to encompass, to encompass the snow and pedestrian use. And I think this would solve the problem of most of the businesses in that area, because shrinking the 2-foot buffer and the 10-feet walkway on the south side, you're going to have a lot more room, you're not going to have any congestion, and you're going to have a very, very safe operation. So that's what our position is of the council. We circulated this to our board of directors and officers, and there was unanimous consent. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Could you first state your last name for the record and tell?
My first name is Al, and the last name Tamani, T-A-M-A-G-N-I, Senior.
And then I just wanted you to repeat the last part. You guys did this as an executive board, and it was a unanimous decision, or was it able to go to the body or not?
Yes, we circulated the draft of this to our officers and the executive board.
Yep, and I, just for other members who aren't as familiar with the community council, that is very common when you don't have enough time to gather a whole body. You need over a month's notice to make sure you can do that, so I would understand why that happened.
Our bylaws do allow the executive board and the officers to make decisions, and then ask for confirmation from the membership if necessary.
Perfect. Commissioner Anderson?
Just a question, as the vacant parcels along this corridor...
Mr. Anderson, can you speak up a little higher or closer to the mic?
Sure. As the vacant parcels along this corridor develop in the future, and potentially with residential uses or uses with more vehicle traffic, if there's a rolled curb along both sides of the road, are you envisioning that traffic would back onto the street over the rolled curb at, along the entire length of the road?
Well, they have to now, at least in the present-type businesses.
And in, your, your body or your group that you represent would feel in the future that that's a safe way to access the road if, if and when there is higher traffic?
If, hypothetically, if. It really, it raises... It really raises a large question if there is going to be an increase in traffic. But I think with the Providence Hospital area, they're going to have a lot of room on those two acre lots over there, their parcels. Actually, the way it is now, it works pretty good for everybody. It's not perfect, but at least I think by making some of these changes, instead of trying to put a square peg around a hole, let's not do that.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak at this time?
Hi, my name's Becky Bailey. I represent Warren &amp; Son.
Sir, who do you represent?
Warren &amp; Son Carpet Cleaning. We are directly connected to Matt Valley Tile. I just wanted to let you know that we run two businesses out of that warehouse, excuse me, I'm going to move over. We run two businesses out of that warehouse, Warren &amp; Son and 1-800-GOT-JUNK. And we also own the rental property that is on the west side of our warehouse. And if you take 10 feet off of that and remove the parking for us, it's going to be very difficult for us also, along with the other three or four businesses that we're speaking earlier about, we are already struggling for parking. And we have, this summer since we're struggling, we had to come into our driveway, build a ramp up so we can park up on the side of our warehouse on our grass, just so we can fit our vehicles there. All of our employees are already on the road, they're on East 48th on the north side, all the way down. The garbage container is on the Matt Valley driveway. They've been gracious enough to let us park ours on there since we have no room. That is about it. Basically, it's going to affect us drastically also.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Going once, going twice? All right, the public comment period is closed. What is the will of the body? Oh, sorry, yes, we need to, we have four minutes and 45 minutes, four, oh, we have seven minutes and 58 seconds remaining for rebuttal. Thank you for staff, for keep, or commission, keep me on my toes.
Thank you. Again, my name is Matt Edge. I'm with CRW Engineering Group. I just wanted to make a couple of points of clarification. So, this property, right slide right here. So just to be clear, rolled curb or not rolled curb, it's not really up to design, designers to make that determination. Rolled curb and driveways full frontage are prohibited by administrative ordinance, it's the last one and I can't read it, but it's in 1983. Rolled curb is, for full frontage driveway access is prohibited in the municipality. So driveway widths are limited to two-fifths of the lot frontage. And that's for any property developed after 1983. So most of the properties, though, this is the good news for the business owners, is most of the properties along the corridor were developed before that time. Even Alaska Spring Performance was developed before that time. However, they have a approved traffic plan for their property that was done in 1978 that dictates where their driveways can access the roadway. The design team has no problem putting rolled curb in across Alaska Spring Performance and the other businesses that are affected right there if it's acceptable through the MOA Traffic Department and permissible. So we're not, we don't have a concern doing it on our end, but we have to be allowed to do that. So as far as construction access, that was a concern. We will require full-time roadway opening. The contractor during construction will not be able to close a roadway. There will be obviously times when it's less than convenient to access properties, but we'll limit those as much as possible. And then, boy, I lost my track. I can say, are there any other questions along the corridor or from the staff? We will work with each and every individual resident to go through the non-conforming determination process to determine rolled curb, if it can be constructed in front of their properties. We will maintain business access and we will accommodate the heavy vehicles that are accessing individual properties. It's standard procedure for all road projects. It just hasn't gotten to that point because we're still in the conceptual design phase as it may be. So I guess that's it. Unless anybody has questions?
I have a question, but I'm going to turn it to our other commissioners first. Commissioner Strick?
Yes, thank you, and through the chair. So rolled curb versus non-rolled curb?
Yes.
What I'm hearing is that, and these are my words, that certain companies, based on their longevity, may be grandfathered into certain types of access subject prior to the municipality's adoption.
Yes, if their property was developed prior to the adoption of that ordinance, they're grandfathered into that.
And what was the date of that one again?
So there's two different dates that are important. It's the bottom two, June 13th, 1978 was when the onsite turning movement ordinance was adopted. And then on September 20th, 1983, was when the two-fifth slot frontage requirement was adopted.
So we can get back to the stage where who's qualified and who's not for the grandfathering and so forth. But would a mixture of full curb versus roll curb down 48th pose a drainage issue, any type of issues that you could foresee?
Not a drainage issue.
So it could be an acceptable compromise?
It's commonly done.
To show the difference on the residential, because there are residential housing?
Yes, and we would anticipate barrier curb along that whole...
Curb, commercial, grandfather, you get your rolled curb. So this could be an option. We're seeing this as a common theme throughout the testimony and so forth and as part of the fixes of the concerns. The other one we're hearing is the 10-foot sidewalk or 10-foot sidewalk on the north side.
Yes.
What if that were reduced to six or five feet?
I mean, you could. It's not, I don't think conducive to bicycle traffic when you narrow it that, you know, you don't get two-way traffic on something that narrow. It's not in conformance with the municipality's desire to establish complete streets, in my opinion. So I don't think it's as beneficial to that traffic as a wider facility, but you know, is what it...
And as a recently turned avid bicyclist, put about 600 miles on my bike this summer here on these streets and found some really screwed up streets, I'll tell you that. And I'll tell you, one of the most dangerous areas I found is when I'm transitioning from a 10-foot wide into no curb or no sidewalk or 5-foot sidewalk out into the street. So the safest place, even according to the municipality, is in the street to ride your bike anyway.
I think that is true for very, you know, for experienced bike riders. You know, we seek, the theme is to develop facilities for people from eight to 80. And I don't think it's necessarily true for an eight-year-old to ride in the street. It's not comfortable for them, not necessarily safe.
I don't disagree, but it's that, what I'm concerned about is the transition. You have someone going on a 10-foot bicycle area and all, because right now this stops at, you don't have your map up?
Eagle.
Cordova?
At Cordova Street, yes.
You're on 48th. That bicycle area is going to stop at Cordova Street.
The pathway will. From Cordova Street to C Street, there is a pathway on the other side of the road and there's shoulders on both sides of the road as well for bicycle travel.
But you're going to transition out.
You may have to cross...
That transition is a very dangerous, extremely dangerous spot.
Though the transition is at a four-way stop controlled intersection too. So I understand what you're saying with merging with traffic and people not looking. It is, it is tricky. You know, we try to accommodate as much as possible. So, you know, we could require bicyclists to ride the roadway.
Streets that aren't swept, all of a sudden you lose your traction and bicycles skid out into the traffic. So your purpose for the 10-foot pathway was to handle bicyclists?
Well, two-way traffic. So pedestrians and bicyclists going in opposite directions along the corridor. So with a narrower facility, you don't have room for passing.
It just seems like we're only accommodating that for about a three-block distance from the Seward Highway to Cordova.
Correct. That's the only area we're constructing, so yeah, that's...
It doesn't map, it doesn't tie in on either end. I'm just thinking that part of the compromise, since this is an industrial area, is that we reduce the...
So the industrial area is only on the south side too?
It is and it isn't. I mean, if you look at the use of the properties, the tile, for example, I'm pulling up my maps again, but from the Seward Highway for one to pass, just past Matt Valley Tile and Stone, that's not considered commercial or industrial?
Commercial business is on the north side, so not industrial. It's not zoned industrial. So Salvation Army is actually zoned business as well, so it's Alaska Spring Performance and then the next two properties over, I believe, are industrial.
The recommendations that were presented by Midtown Community Council, have you reviewed these as well?
I've not received them, so this is the first time I've heard them. I do not. We'd like one, yeah.
I guess it would be important to know what your comments might be on these items.
So, I mean, I wrote them down. So again, rolled curb, that's the first recommendation.
That's the big one.
Yeah, we can, we'll put it in where we can, where we can accommodate that. That's not really my decision or even project management engineering's decision. Each property individually will have to go through a non-conforming determination that the project will facilitate. Alaska Spring Performance has already gone through that process on their own, but we can, we'll help facilitate, you know, the communication with Traffic Department. And limiting the buffer on both sides of both streets, the only buffer that I'm aware of is the one along the back of curb for, back of the curb and the pathway. Eliminating that is possible. I don't think it improves safety at all because corridors do open up into the pathway. I mean, it's common, especially where you have on-street parking, to provide a buffer. You see it downtown, that's where all the parking meters and whatnot are built in. I think there's a reference to 32nd, 33rd. We don't have on-street parking on that roadway at all with the proposed improvements that are going on that roadway. Elimination of the 10-foot pathway, I think we've discussed that. And then add a 5-foot snow storage area for a total of 12 feet to encompass pedestrian use. I think the gist was that was to narrow the pathway from 10 feet to 5 feet and then use the extra area for snow storage. Our total right-of-way width is 60 feet along 48th Avenue. Our total improvements are, what are they?
You're fully operating.
46 feet, so we do have space right now, even with the proposed cross-sections on 48th Avenue, Alternative 3, we have space outside of that for snow storage if needed, where there's not active parking.
Don't get me wrong, I'm not suggesting that all of these are necessarily viable. That's why I wanted to present them to you.
No, I just, yeah, I just wanted to respond to each one, so...
I think there's a dozen points in there that there's some, and I'm not looking for compromise necessarily, but I'm looking for reasonable fixes to an ongoing safety and operational view from some of these businesses.
No, understood, yes, yeah.
Commissioner Spinelli?
So let me just tell you what I understand, I think I understand so far about this whole curb issue. I only see two properties on, or three properties that were developed before the two-fifth driveway ordinance.
Along the entire corridor or just on 48th Avenue?
The entire map, basically.
No, so they're actually summarized on the right-hand side there for the, and maybe it's not coming through clearly, but total before 1983, there's 17 properties along the corridor that were developed before 1983, 15 1978 or earlier.
Just to clarify, I think Commissioner Spinelli was referring to after 1983. There's only two.
Oh, yeah, I'm talking about, yeah, I'm sorry, after, after the two-fifth driveway ordinance. So basically, the two-fifth driveway ordinance barely applies to this project?
Correct.
Except for the southeast corner of Fairbanks and 48th, which they have a site plan apparently from '78 that shows driveways. So do you have very much type 1 curb planned for this project or is it mostly type 2 curb?
We will put type 1 curb everywhere that we can. So all along Providence property, St. Elias, along the residential properties on the north. A lot of places, they, you know, they may have been developed before that's time, but they don't use their full frontage parking, or full frontage driveways. They have defined driveways. And so we'll put type 2 curb except for where the driveways are.
And so then, when it comes to actually designing in type 2 curb, how, can you just explain a little bit more about how that process works, how you decide where, who's getting type 2 curb?
So, okay, so we'll go through and sit down with the Traffic Department and, and we just did this on another project, 30th Avenue, and say, these are the properties that we show were developed before the ordinance was in place that use full frontage parking. They typically will not approve us to install type 2 curb until we, which is rolled curb, type 2 rolled curb, until, unless we have a non-conforming determination. That's a kind of a document from planning that they put together. They look at all the uses and they look at all the previously approved plans. We go through that process with, after we meet with the Traffic Department for each individual property. We actually have to go survey each property. It requires us to contact the property owner because we can't submit a non-conformity determination on their behalf without their permission. So we have to coordinate with them individually and then we turn that over to planning. Planning goes through the whole process and maybe Colin can, if you want to know that. But they go through, look at all the previous planning documents and they come back with a letter that says, these are the ordinances that apply to this property and these are the non-conforming rights that this property has.
Sounds like a really long process.
It is, and a lot of properties, yeah.
So I actually built some roads with type 2 curb recently. And the way we did it was through just a straight variance. And I'm just wondering if you guys could ask for...
We asked the Traffic Department for that.
It's almost like that might just be easier for you to ask for that now and skip all that other...
Like, so we asked, that's why we meet with the Traffic Department, they're the ones who would provide that variance for the driveways. They want us to go through a non-conforming determination process.
Well, let me, I mean, the Traffic Department has opposed my variances, but the Planning Board has approved them. So the municipality is kind of in flux on this whole curb thing. So I'm just, I just kind of, I guess throw it out there for you and staff to consider as another option.
That's good, yeah, I've not gone through that with the, going against the Traffic Department's recommendation to the Planning Board on a roadway. I don't know what your developments were specific to, if it were new subdivision developments?
Yeah.
Mr. Hodges, would you like to comment on that?
Yes, just some brief clarification. So the variances that Commissioner Spinelli is referring to are subdivision variances for new subdivisions and where I think the developer typically, in that situation, builds the street. It's a little different in this situation when it's a public entity is constructing the street. But there's a, that's the variant, there is a subdivision variance as part of that process for a different type of curb.
Commissioner Spinelli?
Well, so here we are hearing a case that has a variance for pathways. I'm just wondering why it would be any different than adding something for the curb if that was the way everybody wanted to go?
So this is a variance for something in Title 21 that applies to the CSS process and road design. The, and that's in Chapter 7 of Title 21. In Chapter 8, the subdivision regulations are applicable only to newly subdivided property. And so, I understand, I see where you're coming from, it's a good point, but there's just different procedures for each. Thanks.
So I'm not sure if this is a question or a comment, and it's mostly related towards staff, but the thing that I'm having a hard time dealing with is right now I'm seeing this is our preferred alternative for 48th Street. But the end result is that it's not going to actually look like this for pretty much anything on the south side of the street because they're going to have a variance with a roll curb. So I won't actually know what it'll look like. And so it seems kind of weird for us to approve something that, for the most part, is going to be varied from based on the amendments. Is there a reason that, I, it just kind of, I run into this sometimes on staff where it feels like the order is just off a little bit, like, why couldn't the city first go to the property owners, get them on board with that proposed variance? Like, why couldn't the city first go to the property owners, get them on board with that proposed variance that's going to come through, and then come to us to see if it can be approved or not? Because until we know if it's going to work for them, it's kind of hard for us to say it's going to be a 10-foot pathway or a 6-foot pathway.
So, to speak, I'll let Matt speak to the projects process, but I can speak to the CSS portion of it in terms of the timing. This is not the last time this project will be in front of a commission or board. We'll go to the Urban Design Commission at 65%. So, there is another stage at which these elements are examined. At this point, it's 35% design, so as Matt had mentioned, it's a relatively early stage. And so part of the reason that they haven't gotten to that point is that we were, the Planning Department, through Title 21, requires that the project be no more than 35% designed, so that's kind of where-
Okay, that makes sense to me.
So, the cross-section you have there is just a typical section that shows kind of the standard widths and dimensions. There will be areas on the cross-section along the roadway that will look like that, specifically the area in front of Providence. Other areas will have asphalt and rolled curb. It's not pertinent to the overall width or the impacts to the adjacent properties, it's just a specific, yeah.
And then, one other question, just for clarification, I keep kind of confusing this. West of Cordova, what is the street sidewalk layout? Like, how much room do we have for sidewalks on each side? How much room for the road?
We have a 5-foot sidewalk on the north side and 8-foot pathway, I believe, on the south side, on the south side of the road.
And was there any talk about trying to at least keep the continuity of the north side? Like, that wasn't an alternative, really?
No, I mean, in the ideal situation, we would be able to do that, but in order to-
Provide two-way traffic, you wanted to change it.
Exactly, so when we have, Alternative 1 has a pathway on one side and a sidewalk on the other side. It's not necessarily meant to be indicative of which side the pathway would be on, but just the overall impacts to the project, you know, or to the adjacent properties.
Since we're already seeking a variance to remove a sidewalk on one side of the street, would there be any additional variance that would be needed to, for instance, have a 6-foot or a 5-foot sidewalk on the north side?
I don't.
Or do you, yeah, sorry.
I think the variance for the Planning and Zoning Commission is just limited to having a pedestrian facility on one side of the road as opposed to both sides of the road, and Colin can correct me if I'm wrong, but it doesn't pertain to the actual width of the pedestrian facilities. There would be additional requirements for, through the design, through MOA, Project Management Engineering, to get variances to the Design Criteria Manual. I believe we would have to do that. So, I don't know, I mean, I'm not sure exactly.
So then, this would be a question for staff. If, for instance, the commission here was in favor of having a sidewalk on the north, but not on the south, could we, for instance, in the matter of case 2012-12517, just say, provide a pathway on the north side of East 48th instead of specifying that it's a 10-foot pathway? I'm just afraid that if we lock ourselves into a 10-foot, when it may later come out that that isn't quite reasonable. Is that something that we could do?
Yes, you can do, you, the commission has latitude to change the recommendation in that case. I would just advise that, since it's pertaining to a variance with specific standards, that the commission look at those standards and just issue some brief findings if they consider appropriate. If they consider that a smaller pathway may be appropriate, or that leaving the pathway width up to the discretion of the project team is appropriate, then that be addressed with some findings for each standard. So, that would be my recommendation.
All right. I don't necessarily have an opinion on that yet, but it might be something the commission wants to consider. I'm not sure yet, though. Any other questions for the petitioner? Commissioner O'Quinn?
So, what would these, what would it look like with the roll-on, roll-off curbs? With the, with the as-recommended approval, what would the cross-section actually look like?
It would be the same as what you're seeing.
It just wouldn't be a straight-up curb.
Yes, I don't have my laser player. Yeah, so on the side that has just a barrier curb, which would be the right-hand side here, I mean, where we have rolled curbs is where we'd have driveways. And so, you just have, instead of a barrier curb here, it would just be rolled, and then this would be asphalt. Same, you know, same distance for improvements. We may actually be able to shorten the improvements in some of those locations where we can match into the existing asphalt, you know, closer to the back of the curb.
And so, on the side with the pathway, it would be?
Oh, so on this side, so, yes, on the locations where we have a driveway, on those locations, we would transition the pathway in to be attached to the back of curb, and then just put the concrete buffer on the opposite side of the driveway. That would just be for delineation, just so that when people are going in and out of the driveway, they understand where the pedestrian facilities begin and end, that's all.
But I think, as the Chair mentioned, it's, most of these folks on the north side are going to have a variance, right?
On the north side, there's only two properties that, actually, really one property. It's the, where Warren &amp; Sons is, where Ronald Reiser owns a property that has that extended-length driveway, is the only one that's really full-frontage.
And the, sorry, and the tile and stone?
That's the same, Ronald Reiser owns that property, yeah, so that's that business right there on the north side, and then to the west of Gimbel.
All right, any other questions for the petitioner? All right, thank you so much for your time, and now, public comment is officially closed. Just before we move on, do people need, the commission need a quick break before we go into further deliberation? Yep, we're going to take a quick five-minute break, and then we'll resume discussion. All right, I think we have everyone, so we'll come back into session here. I have a quick question for staff before we proceed. I think it was in the packet, but now I can't find it. Did you say that there is an order of which we should address these items?
Yes, the variance first, and that is actually, so they're on page 15 and 16 of the staff report. Items A and B, so address A first, and that's case 12517, which is the variance.
And just for my own curiosity, why do we address the variance first?
It's a procedural thing where the variance needs to be addressed first before the DSR can be considered, because the DSR isn't really valid without the variance as proposed.
Okay, that now makes sense to me. Having heard that, what is the will of the body? Commissioner Strike?
First one's easy. In the matter of case 12517, approve, move for the approval of the variance as provided by the staff with their department recommendation.
All right, moved by Commissioner Strike, is there a second? And that was with the department recommendation one as well, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that is seconded by Commissioner Gardner, would you like to speak to your motion?
I think it's self-explanatory, this one's easy.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak to this motion? Well, even though, oh, Commissioner Gardner?
I have some thoughts as to how the standards of the variance are satisfied, but I guess initially I have a question for clarification. If, if the motion is limited to just providing that A1, that there, where's my question? If the motion as approved would require a 10-foot wide pathway on the north side, or would permit something other than 10-foot wide pathway?
I believe as written, and maybe Mr. Hodges can correct me, it is written that it would provide a 10-foot wide pathway on the north side. Is that correct?
That is correct, so case 12517 is written that way. Although, case, so case 2019-0136 mentions a pathway, but does not provide a width. So, if you were to make an adjustment to that, then you'd only need to alter the recommendation in 12517.
We have a request for you to say that again.
Sorry, so, through the Chair, it's, so on page 15, we have the department recommendation, item A for case 12517. That condition, that recommendation specifically says that a 10-foot pathway is required. Whereas on case, page 16, item B, case 2019-0136, the pathway is mentioned in condition one, but the width is not mentioned. So, I was just making it clear that you'd only need to address that a difference in the variance, not the actual motion for the DSR itself.
Okay, I think I understand that correctly, then I would propose, or I'd move to amend the motion to strike the reference to 10 feet from the width of the pathway in subsection A.
Motion to amend by Commissioner Gardner. And it is seconded by Commissioner Strike. I'm going to give you the first opportunity to speak to your motion, and I'm going to be second in the queue.
I think the basis of my motion is that I don't think the 10-foot wide pathway is necessary in order to support the variance standards. That's the primary reason, and I don't see a basis for limiting ourselves at this point to the 10-foot width on the north side.
And I would like to say that as it is currently, the motion is currently to amend, I will not be supporting that motion. I think it is unwise for us to not leave any sidewalk range. I would, however, support that motion if it was read to provide a 5-foot to 10-foot sidewalk, because I don't think it has yet been determined what is appropriate, but 5-foot would at least match the street on the other side. It would still guarantee that we have a sidewalk, and it still leaves open the opportunity for a 10-foot if it's necessary, but it would not give anything larger than a 10-foot. And so I'm worried that if we just strike the length in its entirety, or the width in its entirety, that we would be doing a disservice, and we're supposed to be getting them further along on their design towards that 35% threshold. And so I at least want to narrow it down for them. So, if you would accept, I wouldn't say it's amendment to the amendment, but it would just be you rewording your amendment so that it would be to provide for a 5- to 10-foot wide pathway, but I don't want to steamroll your motion.
No, no, I have, I guess I kind of assumed that there would be a 5-foot kind of minimum included in that, but I have no objection, and I'm happy to have that read 5- to 10-foot wide pathway.
Commissioner Strike, are you also, okay, and then Mr. Hodges, would you like to comment on that newly worded?
Yeah, this is just a technical consideration for the wording. The project team can indicate if I'm right or wrong on this, but I think the wording sidewalk versus pathway makes a difference in this situation. Okay, I see a nod, so if you use anything, I think, under 8 feet, you'd have to, it would be a sidewalk, and over 8 feet, a pathway. So, I would just recommend, in order to be able, for them to be able to fully carry out what you're proposing, that you use maybe sidewalk or pathway.
It would read to provide a 5-foot to 10-foot sidewalk, or 5-foot to 10-foot wide sidewalk or pathway on the north side.
I think that would allow more latitude.
And I have no concern with that, but I'm seeing, I don't know if the petitioner has any comments on this proposed amendment, I'd be curious to hear.
I don't have any, I don't have any comments on the language, except I just wanted to clarify that the Planning Department did recommend us to increase the width of sidewalks to 6 feet. So, I don't, that just provides conflicting information if we're told at one location to provide 6 foot, another place to do 5 to 10 foot. And you can call it a non-motorized facility or whatever, and that'd be fine, so.
Commissioner Strike?
Yeah, I think what we're doing is we're giving some leeway for consideration in light of the totality of the, between Old Seward Highway and Cordova, that it gives the design some elements of options available. We're not blocking, we're not locking you into 6 foot.
I think so. Mr. Hodges, are you still in the queue with? Okay. Yes, I believe that's true, so I'm going to then go to Commissioner Anderson.
Yeah, I think one of my understandings was on the sidewalk width of 10 feet was that if there's only a sidewalk facility on one side, that we have more pedestrian traffic on that one side, and we're trying to accommodate more potential two-way traffic on that sidewalk. So, I don't know if we make another clarification that if we want that to be a two-way pedestrian facility or not. I'm not familiar enough with pedestrian uses in sidewalk design or the design criteria, but if that was one of the reasons for a wider sidewalk, if we want to make sure that that's accommodated.
I guess I could, oh, Commissioner Strike?
Yeah, I saw you contemplating a response back, but I think that we're leaving the option that having a two-way traffic isn't necessarily a requirement that we're posting here, because that two-way traffic at the wider width of pathway gave rise to bicycle traffic, as well as pedestrian on the same side, on the same pathway. And I think what we're saying is, once we reduce that into the 5-foot area, we're pretty much reducing that to pedestrian traffic, especially since that's the side of the road where parking would be allowed, and so individuals parking on that side of the road, being able to get to safely to their area without walking in the street. I think we're taking the ability off the table that this be a 10-foot pathway is our crux here, so that that limits the two-way traffic element there. If that gets you over your-
I would just add in that we're not taking off the limit of a 10-foot pathway, because it's between 5 to 10 feet, but that would be a minor quibble. Mr. Hodges?
Sorry, just a procedural reminder, if the possibility of a lower sidewalk is, or, sorry, lower width is entertained, I would just ask again to make sure that the variance standards are addressed, and there's some findings relating to that.
Mr. Hodges, I'm seeing some confused faces, perhaps you can be more clear with us and babysit us a little bit further.
Yes, sorry about that. So, on page, in the beginning of the staff report, pages 5, 6, and 7, each variance, actually, I do apologize, because I don't believe the Planning and Zoning Commission has used too many of this type of action, so my apologies for not clarifying this a little further. Because the requirement for sidewalks on both sides of the street is an element of municipal code, Chapter 7, that this project is, applies to this project and is proposing to depart from. The staff report contains the analysis of standards A, B, C, and D, again, on pages 5 through 7 of the staff report. And the variance standards are there as a method to make sure that the, if a variance from existing municipal standards is approved, that it adheres to, that it doesn't affect the public in negative ways, and that whatever's proposed instead of the facility on both sides of the street is adequate and will adequately serve the public. And in this case, if there is a reduction in the, even though you're still leaving the door open, as you said, for a wider pathway, or for a 10-foot pathway, if there is a potential for reduction there per the approval that is issued tonight, then there needs to be some findings or, you know, statements relating to how that proposal or that potential reduced width would still meet the standards A through C.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, A through D.
Yeah, Commissioner O'Quinn?
I was just going to say, I think the standard as proposed by Commissioner Strike and Commissioner Gardner, or vice versa, I believe the 5- to 10-foot width complies with the variance- width, uh, complies with the variance standards in the same way that they were recommended, recommended by the, by the, by staff, uh, for the same reasons recommended by staff.
Yeah. Um, thank you, Commissioner O'Quinn. I would also add that, um, with regards to the spec, um, that there are specifics, uh, special circumstances or conditions affecting the property that such a strict application of the provisions, um, are impractical and reasonable is the fact that, um, many of the current uses, um, currently go into effect, uh, before that, were built before that ordinance of, uh, that went into effect in 1979 and 1983. And so already, most likely, they're going to have, um, get further variance, while there will be roll curbs to allow those businesses to establish. Um, and that in order to accommodate those businesses, it may be more practical to have a five-foot pathway as opposed to a 10-foot pathway. However, at the conclusion of working with those, um, businesses and organizations, they may find that a 10-foot pathway is, still leaves those businesses enough room to accommodate. Um, as for it not being detrimental to public or welfare, I think if it is kept to a smaller pathway, I don't think that that would be any less detrimental than a 10-foot pathway, um, because the previous, uh, pedestrian access that is going into those streets are a five-foot, um, pathway, and already those five-foot pathways don't really accommodate what we would see as commuter bike traffic. Um, and those would already be in the street and would continue to go in the street. Um, but those slow-moving pedestrian traffic of, um, younger bicyclists and, uh, people walking would be able to fit in a five-to-10-foot range, going to, um, see that it will not have an effect of nullifying the intent and purpose of the subdivision regulations. Um, I agree, it's going to be, it's mostly, it's for these few buildings that have those unique, um, standards. Um, and it will still continue to provide a safe, convenient, non-motorized facility that meets the existing municipal designs. Um, and D, I also do not see any undue hardship resulting, um, from the strict compliance with a specific provision, the difference between a five to a 10-foot. I feel, um, there wouldn't be any hardship on, um, pedestrian users doing that. However, there may be, there is the potential that, um, the current, uh, businesses there would not be able to operate at their current level if, um, they do not have continued access, um, uh, off of 48th. And Commissioner Gardner?
Um, I just wanted to add that, in, in my view, the, um, allowing the possibility of a five-to-10-foot non-motorized path or sidewalk on the north side, um, doesn't affect the variance standard, because I'm, I'm reading these as applying really whether the variance supports removing the requirement for sidewalk on the south side of the street east of Cordo, uh, no, I'm sorry, east of Eagle. And given the uses that are there, it doesn't, it doesn't sound like, and from the testimony we've heard today, that there's much in the way of pedestrian, um, traffic kind of traveling along the south side there as it is. And not only that, but it's potentially dangerous, given the, um, properties who have the full-frontage driveway access and the limited turning and maneuvering that leads to large vehicles kind of crossing over where, where the sidewalk would be. Um, and so I think those considerations, um, independently support the variance.
All right. Seeing no one else in the queue, uh, call for vote. And that motion passes. That amendment passes. Um, now going to the main motion. Would anyone like to speak to the main motion? Though I think a lot of those public comments addressed both. Commissioner Gardner?
Yeah, I'll just say that my, my comments were speaking generally to the main motion through the lines of the proposed amendment.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the main motion? All right, call for vote. And that most, motion passes. Um... Would anyone like to make a motion regards to case 2019-0136? Commissioner O'Quinn?
I'd like to make a motion, um, to approve, uh, case number 2019-136, staff recommendation, with the change that, uh, condition of approval one, that the sidewalk be at least six feet. Um, no, I want to say that. The, on the condition number two, on both sides of Cordova Street, the sidewalk shall be a minimum of six feet. I'd like to change that, that, to be a minimum of five feet.
Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by, um, Commissioner Krishna. And I just want to have a clarification. If that motion fails, and that wouldn't completely fail the motion, because it could still go to someone, since it wasn't directly on the motion, someone could still make the original motion. Is that correct?
Um, I, that might be a question for Lori.
Yeah.
I was, uh, I did briefly put myself in the queue, just, um, on a tech, just on, again, a procedural, um, not trying to say what is right or wrong in this case, but there is a, um, so that...
I think procedurally, what we should do is, we should read the motion as stated, and then do an amendment, if we wish to make an amendment. Is that what you're getting at?
Uh, well, the, so, number, condition two, um, and I just wanted to make, make sure that it was the intent that Cordova Street, um, the sidewalks be reduced to five feet potentially, because, uh, I don't think Cordova Street had come up thus far.
No, I withdraw the motion. I, uh, I just want to ensure that the, when I'm making this motion, that the five-foot minimum width for the north side of 48th Avenue is captured. So, uh, I don't see that in here.
No, I do not believe it's in there. Um, and I think, I think, I'm, I think procedurally, it would be okay for a recommended five-foot, um, but it should not be done as the, as the original motion being presented, because then it could not be amended, and if it is voted down, that is the end of the motion.
My apologies.
Um, I'm taking that as a removal of a motion. Is there a motion on the floor? Knowing that it is easy to make the motion, because it is written down on page sixteen. Commissioner O'Quinn?
I would move that we approve, um, the motion, or the, the staff recommendation in case number 2019-0136, uh, the approval of the preferred alternatives identified in the context-sensitive solutions design study report for the 48th Avenue and Cordova Street reconstruction project, um, with the two, uh, conditions of approval as, uh, as indicated on page sixteen.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Quinn. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Krishna. Um, would you like to speak to your motion? Or would anyone else like to speak to the motion?
I can't amend my own motion, right?
You can amend your motion.
Okay. I'd like to amend my motion, uh, now to ensure that the, uh, condition of approval number one, the north side of East 48th Avenue sidewalk being at least six feet wide, uh, to amend that to be at least five feet wide.
I believe that it is written that in addition to the proposed pathway on the north side of East 48th Avenue, a sidewalk that is at least six feet wide shall be provided on the south side. Wait, sorry, which, yeah, and, but you were saying you wanted to amend the north side. But I think the north side doesn't reference the width at all. Only the south side mentions the width.
Right. So, I'd like to add another condition of approval, I think, that the proposed pathway on the north side of East 48th Avenue be at least five feet wide.
And then, I'm just going to throw this to Commissioner Hodges, because that's where I throw all my questions that I don't want to answer myself. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we don't need to make an amendment to that regard, because it's already in the variance that we just approved.
Um, that's correct. You don't need to. I, there, there is a difference between the pathway and the sidewalk, but given the fact that the pathway is clearly referring to the variance, um, standard as a sidewalk or pathway, there's really no need to change it, um, unless you really wanted to, you know, dot every i.
I don't need to dot every i. So, I will amend my amendment to go back to the original motion.
Or just remove your amendment?
Remove my amendment.
Um, and, uh, for the sake of clarification, would you mind a friendly amendment to your main motion of, to read proposed pathway or sidewalk?
Not at all.
All right. Um, and is that still seconded by Commissioner Krishna? Okay. I'm going to give Lori some time to catch up, because I just, I just threw a whole bunch of stuff at her, so everyone, please bear with me.
I haven't had dinner yet, I'm sorry.
You guys all smile at me when you tell me I screw up, so at least we're happy about it. Let me know when you're ready. All right. I think we're officially caught up. Just to make sure we're all clear, I'm going to go ahead and read the motion on the floor. Um, I believe the motion is to recommend approval of the preferred alternatives identified in the context-sensitive solution design study report for the 48th Avenue and Cordova Street reconstruction project, subject to the following, subject to the two conditions of approval on, um, page sixteen, the first of which being amended to say, "in addition to the proposed pathway or sidewalk on the north side." Dot, dot, dot. All right. I think we are all on the same page now. However, I have been wrong before. Um, would anyone like to speak to that motion as moved by Commissioner O'Quinn and seconded by Commissioner Krishna? Commissioner Anderson?
Yeah, I think this was a challenging one to balance, um, the needs of the existing users and the potential future uses and pedestrian uses along the roadway. I think what we've come up with is a, a good compromise that maybe doesn't make everybody 100% happy, but it does provide pedestrian facilities, um, and it does allow properties on both sides of the road that, uh, qualify for a non-conforming determination to remain using the full width of the roadway with a rolled curb.
Thank you. I would like to second, uh, Commissioner Anderson's comments. Um, I am one of, I think, one of the few commissioners that were on this when it came to us originally, and I think we have to apologize to staff a little bit, because we really put that pedestrian area as a recommendation first, and now we're hearing more and more how that may not be completely needed as much as we thought. However, I want to thank everyone who came and testified, because I hope you realize that your participation here really did make a difference in driving this forward, and I hope you realize, um, as both staff and the petitioner said, that they will be coming to talk to you about the specifics of getting this to work on your property. Um, yeah, I'm going to leave it at that and let Commissioner Strike speak now.
Yes, and I, I would like to echo Commissioner Bailey's, um, comments about the public testimony. It's, it's listened to, but I specifically want to call out the, um, community council member who came in, not just to address what the issues were, but to identify possible solutions. And that's much appreciated. It gives a better clarity, seeing it in writing, rather than just the verbal, and so, good approach. Thank you.
And I'm also going to add one more thing, is that I think it's, um, good that this update is happening to the street as we, no, as we have seen in pictures, and I'm sure as all the individuals here have testified, the street does need some repairs, and the drainage system also needs repairs. And so it's good that when we do that, we're designing the street that makes sense for not just now, but in the future as well. Call for vote. And that item passes. All right. And so I think that brings us to the end, and since we have a new commissioner, I usually reserve the honors of having a motion to adjourn by our newest commissioner. So, um, Commissioner Winchester, would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
And is there a sec, uh, yeah?
Oh. Just fancy.
And is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner O'Quinn. I'm seeing no objection, and we are adjourned.